So, the City of San Juan Baptista, special city council meeting of Tuesday, July 14th, 2020 is now in session. Call to order?
Oh, we're, I'm sorry, I think we're, I think we're...
Hi, I'd like to hear it.
I can't hear you.
Oh, perfect, thanks, you're here, how are you? I just had to connect my sound, do some mic work.
Okay, we're, we're, we just called the meeting to order and we're gonna do, we're gonna dispense with the pledge of allegiance, so we did that already. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember DeGries? Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
Councilmember Flores? I see him.
Mm-hmm, he's muted. There he is.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Great, Mayor Ed?
Here.
Thank you, go for him.
Try Dan again, Dan is here.
Councilmember DeGries?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, go for him.
Okay, thank you.
That was, that was because Councilmember Freeman talked over me. I'd like to make an objection to him talking over me and suggest that never happen again.
Okay, all right. All right, so, item number two, do we have any public comment? Anything that is on the agenda? You have three minutes. Public comment, I think I see. No, I guess not. Okay, all right, so we'll go, so we'll go on. We'll go on to the consent items. All matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion authorizing actions indicated for those items so designated. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless, unless requested by a member of the city council, a staff member, or a citizen. So, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to change the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so Dan and Cesar, thank you. So now let's go on to...
Let's pick a vote.
Oh, forgot.
So we have a, Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan? Yes. Mayor Ed?
Yes.
Thank you. All members of the council are present and motion to the stage by the maker of the passage of the amendment.
Thank you, all right. Now we go on to number four. Presentations, informal items, and reports. So, A is presentation of preliminary engineer's report for city water alternatives, so...
Thank you, Mayor. This is Don, our city manager, and I'm hiding over here, hello. The report being shared with you tonight was shared in initially June, and so we're coming back, and this time we have our consultant team with us. Carl Bajarki is on, our expert managing our water project, and we have Tony Akell on at his firm, and we have Steve Beck from Sand Tech, and there may be others in the facility if I missed you. Steve managed this report, and Steve, if you want to try and share your screen, you can pull up your slides now while I'm talking, just try to do the screen share at the bottom. If you go down to the bottom and it says "screen share," you should be able to do that and pull your slides up. Steve, I hope you can hear me? There you go. It's working. There you go.
Is it your screen?
Yeah, you did it. Thank you. Great, okay. So, we are working on our master plans and actually received draft master plans. I haven't read mine yet, I confess. We have a draft water master plan now and a draft wastewater master plan, and we've been doing this, working with Carl, and we've been working with Tony Akell since October, and this is a big accomplishment to get to this point. Part of the, we had a change order that authorized working on this analysis, comparing this analysis, and also, and, and, this report studies approximately nine different alternatives for the city, and has a preliminary recommendation, and it's preliminary because there's more research to be done. We have research initiated last week with in-depth, the second meeting with the City of Hollister to talk about potentially sending waste to Hollister as one of the options, wastewater, and we had a second meeting with the San Bernardino Water District, and, 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 and so that's why this is a preliminary report. But it's a very detailed report because it's also the initiation of our application for USDA, Department of Agriculture, grant and loan assistance to help fund the improvements. So from this, we hope to get a compliance project, and we also hope to get funding. So that's the purpose of these studies, they're very important. And Carl, is there anything that you would like to say before we get started?
Uh, no, Don, you've covered that well. What we're gonna talk about tonight is a significant portion of the report, but it's not the whole report. But this is something that we want to share with the council to see how these all sort of...
Great, thank you, okay. Then Steve, why don't you go ahead and get us started?
Okay, Don, thank you. Again, my name is Steve Beck from Sand Tech, and there are a number of people involved in preparing this report, and I'm more than surprised at managers, so if you bring me out some issues, I may have to defer back to my staff, but I'll try to get through this. The, the, our, for our presentation this evening, what we'd like to do is go to the findings and recommendations of the draft preliminary engineer report. The, as Don mentioned, the final version of this report will be submitted to the US Department of Agriculture as part of the grant application that we're pursuing for this project. Our hope is that the, is that USDA will give us grant money for approximately 45% of the total project cost, and then if necessary, then finance the rest of the project through them through low-interest law. With that, so, our primary focus with this report is to, was to, you know, was to try to look at a number of things, but primarily, our interest was to figure out what we need to do, what are the alternatives to get the wastewater treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant back into compliance. Right now, the, as you know, the city is in violation of their definite discharge permit primarily for total dissolved solids, chlorides, and sodium. In simple terms, we're putting too much salt in a crate in our discharge, and so we've been in violation for a number of years on this. And so the primary focus of this report was to look at what alternatives we have to get the wastewater treatment, get the city back into compliance with this waste discharge permit. Okay, so, so for our presentation tonight, I think this will try to keep this to about 15 minutes, but open up for questions and feel free to ever have the, anytime I'm talking here. But we want to start with talking about the, talking about the sources of the salt that are coming into the wastewater treatment plant, and then look at, we have a number of options to look at for what we call source control. And we do something at the source to prevent the salt from coming into the wastewater treatment plant in the first place, and then, and then with that information, then we looked at a number of alternatives that would be required to either upgrade the wastewater treatment plant, or one of the alternatives is to, as Don mentioned, is to, is to send our wastewater to the Hollister wastewater treatment plant, this is a regional project. And so, this report is very preliminary at this point, we'll discuss what the current recommended project is, and rediscussion about the schedule, and then open up for questions. So let's start with, with salt. You know, we've got, our, our, our primary headache right now is we've got salt coming into the wastewater treatment plant. We have a treatment plant that's not capable of removing the salt, so that salt gets discharged and created, and thus, the reason for our violation. The source of the salt comes from several sources. Our potable water comes from groundwater, and so we have, we have a certain amount of salt in groundwater due to farming activities in this area, mineralization of the, of the water, the groundwater, or other things. But then we also add salt, our residential users add salt in just in preparing their food and the home care products that they use, but also, our groundwater is very hard, so most of, many of our residential users and commercial users have water softeners. These are called self-generating water softeners where they dissolve the water, they release salt into, they discharge salt in a filtration system. And then finally, we have industrial user that also contributes, they sniff a lot of salt that goes into the filtration system and to wastewater treatment plant. So, so there are a number of culprits here, and so we're kind of talking about that. So we went ahead and as part of the study, went ahead and did a salt balance, and the way you do the salt balance is you look at, you look at the data on the wastewater influence, look at concentrations of the different constituents, and then you do some back calculations based on information that we have about the source water. In this case, well, what, what we know from experience on personal care products, food handling by homeowners, the self-generated water softeners, so we can calculate how the salt is going in there, and then we sample the industrial user to get that. So, these numbers in this table are in pounds per day, but probably a better way to talk about this is that on an average basis, our groundwater contributes about 35% of the total salt that's going in the wastewater treatment plant. Home is contributing about 15%, water softeners in the homes and the commercial businesses contribute about 25%, and then the industry contributes 24%, and then we've got a little bit of INI that contributes about less than 1%.
Hey, Steve?
Yeah?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I heard you just admitted to go to say interrupt me if you have any questions.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I have a question. If we remove the industrial user component, where would we be?
Well, the, the, we're gonna talk about that a little bit. These numbers that we have on the industrial users based on one single grab sample, and since this report was prepared, we now have some intensive monitoring over the course of, we don't have all the data yet, but other indications from the data that we do have from the composite sampling that we've done on a daily basis for the last, I think it's 14 days, don't I say correct? Yeah. And indicating the industrial, the actual solvent from industrial users is gonna be a higher number than we show here. So, you know, so what happens here is then on an average basis, we can expect that the, the salt contribution from the industrial user is gonna go up, and this, this balance is gonna be recalculated to show that the, the salt concentration of industrial users is a little bit higher than shown here. But then, what's, what we also have to be aware of is that during peak months and peak weight loading conditions, industrial user numbers are much higher on a ounce-per-day basis, and for peak months, based on this number, which we know so well now, we're at, it contributes about 40, 41%, and then a week is 43%. Now, to answer your question, whether we just eliminate the industrial user could we get the wastewater treatment plant back into compliance? We're pretty close, but not, not quite there. Right now, as it stands, eliminating the industrial user would not quite just get into full compliance, but it would certainly get us a long way. Now, once we go back and recalculate with the new numbers, it's gonna become even more significant on industrial users, so...
Well, I appreciate that, that was a full and complete answer, and I'm appreciative of that. Here's, here's the second question. If the industrial user, users, plural, I think there's more than one, were eliminated, if they can get us to where they need, we need to be as a city, is there anything that can be done about what comes into us from those industrial users? Are we doing all that we can so that we're not taking very salty water from these places? I gotta tell you, it's just a full disclosure, Steve, I used to work for Earthbound Farm, and I have it on firsthand, very good authority that the water that they are sending to us is not good water. And I think, and Pam's gonna ask the city manager who the other industrial users are. I think it's Earthbound, Trulieve, and is it Coke maybe, Don? Who else?
So, right, in response to councilmember, you are correct, Earthbound is, is the focus of this concern, and the testing that we're doing now is related to Earthbound. Trulieve is the other industrial user that provides a pretty good volume of water, but it doesn't seem to be as strong, and maybe, I don't know that we've tested that, so maybe, maybe Steve is aware. The Coke Farms is barely a trickle, they hardly contribute at all, just from their, their handful of office employees. So, and then further into your question, Carl and I have been working on a permitting process. The city didn't have a permitting process for its industrial users before, and at our last meeting two weeks ago, the water board suggested we look into that. We have the criteria outlined in our municipal code saying that we cannot accept water that's, that's not to the EPA standard, but this is the first time, I think, we've actually looked at and evaluated it and considered a permitting process so that we can control it. So to that end, I was, I was fortunate to reach the operations manager this week at Taylor Farms. He's responsible for three plants, including Selena's and Gonzalez, but he's very interested and wants to work with us as closely as possible to identify the, the source of the salts in the water. He too was surprised to hear the initial results that we have. So we have started to build a partnership there, and we have started to build a process, a better process than we had before.
Well, that's, that's, that's good news, I'm happy to hear that, especially when I hear Steve say that if they're not the source of our problem, they're, whoops, yeah, they're, they're supposed to be the source of our problem here in San Juan Baptista. An industrial user is the source of our problem, and we need to do something about that. And the other, since I no longer work for Earthbound Farm, Deadmaul, city attorney, I want to make this very clear, I'm not breaching any kind of confidences or anything else. This is all anecdotal information that I received since I left the employer of Earthbound a number of years ago. But my information is that they are greatly exceeding the amount that their discharge permit that they were granting under CEQA many years ago. And some need, and I'll be happy to do on that, this is San Juan Baptista, maybe Deadmaul can do it. They need to look at the CEQA granting discharge allowance from Earthbound Farm to San Juan Baptista when that went through. That was a CEQA project, or it was a project under CEQA, I should say, and the amount of water that they were able to discharge since San Juan, regardless of quality, just the quantity was very highly scrutinized, and they are two, three times that amount today, as I have been told. So if they're two to three times the amount that they should have discharged in the first place, number one, and if number two, that water that's coming into us is super salty and is setting us over the edge, then I would suggest as for one, that's where we need to look.
Yeah, well, let me show this next slide, we're getting medication out. In this table, on the upper left corner, this is, this is based on one single grab sample, so we're concerned that, that maybe this could, maybe...
Can you see? Oh, I can, I can sit back. What is going on?
Please, please, um, remove their microphone, we don't need a family conversation.
Was Charlie in the same place?
Hello?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so, one, one, basically, basically, I made it in, standing here as we, here for the basis, the information that you have from you based on a single, single grab sample, and so we've got data coming in right now, we've done composite samples over the last two weeks, and we're gonna bound that data right now. What I'd like to tell you is that, that these numbers are gonna go up, what you see in this table, and to give you some, some idea of permit, discharge permit, if you look at total dissolved solids, you can see the number, 28,8, our discharge load is 40,000, chlorides is 200, you see 1150, now sodium is 250, we're at 687, so there's certainly a concern with our industrial user. This is primarily, we believe this is primarily in wastewater descent over, they're probably using perchloride to wash down this effect, so maybe there's some other chemical agent that contributes the salt. The other industrial users are, are less of a factor because we think that's just sanitary bathrooms and stuff, and so we're being, most of the salt is coming from the Earthbound, Earthbound or Taylor Farms facility. Well, this, this report needs to be updated with more current numbers, but it appears that the numbers are going up from the industrial user. Okay, all right, that's your word. Very, okay. So, okay, so, so our study kind of started out looking at source control options. The revelation about the industrial user kind of came late in game, but certainly now all over that. Prior to that, the belief was that our primary source of salt was coming from the water softeners, individual water softeners in residences and commercial stuff, and still is a significant contribution to the total salt load. A number of years ago, the city purchased a, a water softening plant in an effort to reduce the hardness of the water, and thus, by reducing the hardness of the water, then, then that opened the possibility to eliminate having the, the individual water softeners. That project, they quite wanted to purchase, but it was never installed, so option A was to look at what it would take to rehab a water softener plant and put that in operation, and then have some sort of buyback program to, to the individual water softeners. So we'll talk about the cost for that in a minute. Option number two was, well, instead of rehabbing the hell of a water softener plant, why don't we just replace the self-generating water softeners with the cartridge-type water softeners? That would be a little bit more challenging in that because we'd have to go into individual homes, get the homeowners agreed to some sort of program, we guessed the cost would call again about doing this, and we ended up, so we had a cost associated with that, but that, there are some issues with trying to do that. Our best guess is that we might have as many as 350 of these water softeners out there that we have to deal with. And then finally, option C would be to import water from the West Hills Water Treatment Plant near the City of Hollister. That would involve constructing a big pipeline about six miles to take it to our water distribution system in San Juan Baptista. So we looked at first cost in this report, we still, we still, we can, the numbers are loaded on that, looking at what the, what the San Bernardino water rate suits, some of water to us for, and also looking at construction costs on that. Okay, so, deal with source control, so we have option A, B, and C, and, and here the costs, and, and, you know, we can give the weeds a little bit later on this, but the bottom line is that, you know, importing from, importing water from the West Hills Water Treatment Plant would be the most expensive option, except that there's another factor, and that's that, a more recent revelation with our existing potable water source, we have three, three wells at this time, we have well one, well five, and well six. Well six is out of service right now because of higher concentration of nitrate for detentive, so we're down to well number one, which cannot supply enough water for us, and well number five, which has a lesser quality of water. So we've been looking around for other possible water sources, and one possible water source was another well on by a private developer here, Beddable Road, and so we've looked at, done analysis on that, looked at the cost to, to bring that well water over as a, as a means of providing what we call water security, making sure that the community has enough water. One of the concerns we have with well number five is very close to well number six, and we, if we have nitrate showing up in well number six, we're gonna have the problem with how well number five, so it's a, it's a big concern. Unfortunately, the Beddable well water is, is, is up slightly better quality, but still hard water, and it has iron and manganese, so there'd be a cost associated with treating that water for, for a little bit of iron and manganese, and we'd also have to soften that water, so that, there's a pretty big price tag for, for those two options. But if we consider options A and B with the water security component, you can see that the total recycle cost get a little bit closer. Now, regarding the West Hills Water Treatment Plant, we believe that the construction cost that we show here, $6 million, is going to be reduced somewhat. This cost is based on using existing... This cost is based on, uh, using existing county, uh, or existing county roads in the, uh, San Benito water rates. So right away, uh, along with these county roads, I'll show you that in a second. But, uh, uh, we had originally assumed that there would be a lot of road restoration on this. It turns out the majority of the route, the proposed route now would not require us to replace the pavement, uh, the road surface. So, so this number's going to come down somewhat. We don't have the final number yet, but in, in the end, these numbers, uh, total life cycle cost would be much closer to get.
If I, if I may add, I, I think the, 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 the cost of, um, of the option C West Hills is going to be a lot less because the cost of, uh, pavement replacement and stuff like that is probably twenty to thirty percent of that six million dollars. So you could just take plus five million right off the top. Um, literally, all you have to do is dig the ditch and lay the pipe, uh, fill the dirt back on the ground.
Now, we, we think that, uh, like, that's, that's a good point, John. The, the, uh, so this cost is, is going to go down. We're trying to get a handle on that. There are, uh, some short sections, uh, that we're, we might be in the road, uh, in the road to get it, uh, get it over to the city. But, uh, yeah, so those costs are, are being reviewed right now. And the other thing that's being reviewed is the, uh, uh, annual ONM cost, uh, for this also, uh, working with, uh, working with Jeff, uh, Jeff over there at the San Benito Water Agency to.
Yeah, the town.
Also, yeah. So, uh, so we expect, uh, in the, in the file report that the option C number's going to be, uh, uh, lower than this number.
Um, so, let's see, let's see, can I, can I interrupt your step again? This is all premised upon some underlying assumptions that I'm getting back to again, which is we're getting very dirty salty water from industrial uses into our city. And if we block that or stop that or treat it better from the sources, would we be in this situation that we're in now? What I heard you say earlier, when I asked the same question, was no.
No.
That, that we'd be in this situation. In, in other words, if the water, the water that we have in San Juan Batista, to treat that and do everything we need to do with it so forth, would be fine. It's the outside water that we are accepting that is causing the problem.
I don't.
Is that a true statement?
I would say, I would disagree with that here very.
Done. Not the expert answer.
I am the expert here. There's your water clearly, so.
Let the consultant answer.
That, uh, if, please let.
So, well, let me, let me, let me state this, okay? Based on the data that we have right now, eliminating industrial users by itself won't get you there, won't get you in compliance, okay? Uh, it is a significant component, that's for sure. And, uh, based on the most recent sampling that we have, you know, that number's going to go up. But by itself, if you don't leave them, you'll get you in compliance. If I, if I misstated that earlier, I apologize. But that's where we are right now. Now, we still gotta go through and redo the salt balance based on the most recent sampling that, that we just recently received. Uh, we want to have all of the, yes, the way we did the final, uh, staff reports on that hopefully early next week. That's where we are right now.
Steve, let, Steve, let me ask a, a question to that. If we were to eliminate the outside contributors to this dirty water, this salty water to San Juan Batista, you say we'd be pretty close, they wouldn't quite be there. How close would we be? Would warrant us spending the amount of money that we, you're talking about with all this other stuff, if we got, if you control of who's contributing water here? In other words, if we eliminated the contribution factor, would we have to spend a whole lot less money right now in order to remedy the situation?
Well, there's certainly, uh, the, the industrial user reducing their salt load is, uh, definitely, yeah, no question. All right. So how cover is the answer to eliminate that, uh, industrial use entirely? Do not have a discharge source system? Or is it to, uh, have them be in compliance so that their discharge is at least within the effluent limits that we have? So that, that's a big question, right? So, so like, if you're going to have industrial user and their harvest community and contributors community, uh, what, what is that number going to be? Uh, so the, the assumption is that if we accept discharge, uh, from this industrial user, it's not going to be entirely clean, right? But it's certainly got to be better than what we're getting now.
It's got to be better than what we're getting now.
Right, so.
You're exactly right. You're exactly right. And that is the moving forward. You're exactly right there also. And in terms of them contributing to this community, none of them should, should be specified in at all, except for the fact that their employees come here to have lunch and so forth. But, uh, you know, I think it's time, high time overdue that we only accept water from these outside contributors that meet our standards. The rest will lower our problem and therefore lower the amount of money that we have to deal with their problem. Because if, and I'm saying this to the council right now, if you think about it, their problem coming in is our problem going in. So they pump all this terrible salty horrible water to us, and we have to pay these fines as it goes out. Now, we should only accept the water outside of our city land that is clean and good and pure. Let them treat it and pay for it and do everything before it gets here. Otherwise, it becomes our problem, and it's our problem right now. And we can see with Steve's graphs how much money this city's going to have to spend in order to rati- ratify that problem. And it's terrible. And I, I for one object.
And I absolutely agree. And one of the things I've done is I've submitted to, uh, this, uh, the city manager, a complete pre-treatment set of specs. We have the, uh, enabling laws, but we don't have any set of specs for dirtbound farms to follow. So I have submitted. And alls we have to do is literally pass a resolution, putting those specs into place. And then we'll, we'll have to give them some time to dirtbound to, so they can alter their, their, their treatment processes, so they can meet our specs. And at that case, at that point in time, if they're meeting our specs, our, our, our loading, uh, will go way down and it will make our job a lot easier to reach our goal.
I a hundred percent with you. I a hundred percent agree with you, John. And I would, I would suggest that if you want to go after a resolution or you want to offer the resolution yourself, I would say that we will only accept their water if it meets with our specifications. Because this nonsense of them passing their water on to us, that is pretty salty awful, and it results in these kind of numbers to us, and we're, and, and getting guys like Steve, who's a great guy, by the way, Steve, I don't, none of this ire that I'm expressing right now is, is pointing towards you.
Oh, yeah.
Is pointing towards how did we get here, right? And, and what are we going to do about it to prevent the future from reoccurring? And, and we should pass a resolution, John. If you want to offer it, I will co-author it, and I will pass it. I guarantee that we cannot accept water into the city unless it's, it passes the specifications that you mentioned, John. Hundred percent.
Well, I, I have the, I have the, I have the ordinance already drawn up. Uh, it, I thought, um, it was going to be sent to the city, uh, city attorney for approval. Um, I stole it completely off the Fremont Union City, uh, sanitary district plant. Um, uh, it's very good, it's very tight. Um, you know, I, I, I think we need to run it by the city attorney, and then we need to vote on it. But we can do that before we do any of this other stuff. You know, we don't have to, all right, vote on this.
Excuse, excuse me, uh, gentlemen. Let's let Steve complete his presentation. If you have a comment or a question, write it down so that we can ask him after he has completed his presentation, please. That way we can get on with the meeting.
Okay, so.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, thank you. So what we'll do on the, on the, uh, next version of this report, we're going to incorporate the, uh, the anticipated sampling data that we received next week. Um, we'll redo the salt balance, see where we are on this. And then, uh, we'll run the salt balance on some sort of standard that we're going to hold the industry to. And we'll see where we are. So, uh, uh, so, so, and, and we'll see. But I, I, my suspicion right now, uh, is, is that it doesn't quite get us there completely, but it certainly gets us a lot closer than we are now, for sure. Okay, so, uh, you know, with these alternatives, you know, there's, there's also the, uh, non-monetary, um, criteria that should be looked at in addition to the cost, life cycle costs, and the other things. Uh, we don't really need to get in the weeds at this point. Kind of have a system we come through and we, we provide a relative weight for these, these different criteria, whether it's reliability, whether it's, uh, water security, those types of things. And then we score each one of these alternatives. And, uh, even though the West Hills Water Treatment Plant, uh, appears to be the most expensive option, we think that kind of life cycle, uh, cost basis, we believe is going to be a lot closer than, uh, indicated now, once we plug in, uh, the updated construction cost and, and ONM cost for that. Uh, but, uh, you know, so, but even, even with the higher cost right now, it scores, it scores the highest because it's a reliable source of water. And, you know, and really, the, the question for you on the water security is something that the, that the city is going to have to deal with, uh, with the three existing wells. I, I think there's a legitimate concern there with this. If you were, uh, reduced to just using well number one, you would not, you know, supply enough water for your community, you know that. Well, number five, can't supply enough water, but is it, uh, is it at risk at some point of nitrate showing up? That, well, five is very close to well number six, while number six is, is, is shut down right now. So, uh, you know, I think there's a legitimate concern on this, and, and that's certainly a factor in this, uh, in this matrix. Okay, so, um, this, this is just a map showing, um, basically how, how the water gets from the, uh, West Hills Water Treatment Plant over to the city, uh, San Juan Batista, uh, the other, uh, the other lines, green lines and stuff, or, uh, this option, uh, that we'll talk about in a, in a little bit here about, uh, sending our, getting out of the wastewater business and sending it to the Hollister Waste Water Treatment Plant. Uh, and then, uh, the, the line that goes up north, there is the Bedeville well, which is likely not going to be a viable, uh, option for us. Okay, uh, so now let's talk about the wastewater treatment plant itself. Uh, if we had, if we didn't have to deal with, uh, uh, the solid issue and stuff like that, there are still concerns about the existing wastewater treatment plant. There are some, uh, some, some obvious efficiencies with this plant that would have to be addressed to satisfy the, uh, regulatory folks. They've gone out and done inspections on the plant, and they've pointed out a number of things, a number of deficiencies that, uh, regardless, would have to be addressed. And, uh, the, you, the, the plant itself is a, uh, what's called a, uh, an SDR plant. It's a, it's a, basically a pot plant with air filters in there that, uh, that, uh, treats, treats, treats the organic waste. Uh, it gets filtered, it gets, uh, stored, then it gets, uh, uh, disinfected with UV, UV light. Uh, it's, it has some efficiencies. And then if you look at the, uh, the design criteria for this plant, the loading's coming in, uh, today, that plan needs to see what the design criteria was for this plant. So, uh, if everything else was off the table, you'd still be dealing with, um, uh, some issues at this treatment plant and, uh, and have, have to make a decision if we're going to continue to operate this plant. We need to put money into it, uh, to satisfy the, the regulatory folks and also keep this thing in, in proper operation. And, uh, when we kind of look on this on balance, we think the best decision, if you go in this direction, to continue to, uh, operate, maintain this plant, would be to upgrade this to a membrane biore- uh, bioreactor plant. Much higher effluent quality out of this. Uh, however, I need to say this, that the mem- membrane bioreactor plant by itself, uh, is not adequate to remove salt. But what it does is it, it's a, uh, it's a process that lends itself easier to adding on, uh, reverse osmosis or, uh, electrodilus reversal type, uh, add-on treatment for this. So, um, it's, it's, it's the latest technology. Uh, there are a number of, uh, packaged plants of this size that, uh, are, are now, um, uh, economically compatible with more conventional treatment. And so if you're going to put money into this plant, that would be our recommendation, um, to do that. So alternative number one would be, uh, uh, onsite upgrades to the treatment plant, in-brain bioreactor plant, upgrade with that, and then deal with the offsite selenium control. Obviously, take care of the low hanging fruit, get rid of the, uh, the, 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 the salt coming from the industrial user, uh, and then, uh, whatever else you have to do to get, uh, to get the, uh, the salt, um, uh, removed at the source. And, uh, you know, so that we, 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 uh, comply with the waste discharge requirements, effluent discharge requirements. Alternative number two, uh, is, is, is the same as alternative one, except instead of trying to deal with, uh, source control, uh, we, we treat it at the plant, uh, with a reverse osmosis or electrodilus reversal type process. Uh, that's a relatively expensive add-on. And then, uh, you've got the complication having to deal with the brine that's collected in, in that process. And it's likely that you would need some additional land for, uh, putting in some, 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 some brine beds for these, uh, this brine product that's produced from it. And then finally, alternative three is, uh, let's get out of the wastewater business altogether and send our wastewater to the Hollister Waste Water Treatment Plant. The, the only issue with that is, um, they're only going to accept our wastewater if it, it meets their standard, which means that we would, would have to do some, some offsite selenium control. Hopefully under this option, that would be, uh, if we took care of the industrial user and got that, uh, industrial user in compliance, um, that would, would, would handle it. But, uh, so those are the three, three alternatives, uh, for the wastewater treatment plant that we looked at. Uh, here, here's how this, this breaks down. Um, and, and, uh, yes, these are, these are big numbers in here. So alternative one, uh, MBR, they import water from the West Hills Water Treatment Plant. Uh, you can see that, uh, we add everything up ONM cost, uh, building that pipeline again. Uh, let me state again that the construction cost for this is going to, the, the revised number's going to go down somewhat on the construction cost. But, uh, uh, if you consider, uh, uh, the water security cost, uh, it has the, uh, it has the lowest life cycle cost of three alternatives. Alternative number two, MBR with the reverse osmosis, um, has the, the second highest cost, uh, life cycle cost. And then alternative three, the visualization, ha- has, has a certainly higher cost. And that has to do with the, uh, with the connection fee, uh, to the Hollister plant. We have asked the city to go back and reevaluate that. We think that the number that they've given us is, is, is hot, is, is too high, considering that we'd be sending our, our wastewater directly to the plant and not using their sewer collection system. Uh, they kind of gave us a number that they, uh, charge their developers, which we think is somewhat unreasonable. So we expect them to come back and tell us that, that, uh, connection fee, cost, ONM cost, uh, should, we, we expect that to go down somewhat, but probably not to the point that it would, uh, uh, be, be competitive on a cost basis with, with alternative number one. And then, uh, and then we did, did a similar type of, uh, uh, decision matrix where we looked at, uh, evaluated or provided a relative weight for the life cycle costs, uh, reliability and those things. And, uh, and then, then. And, uh, and then it, it, it's based on this, based on these numbers right now, it would be, the, the recommended alternative would be the, um, MBR, uh, upgrade to the existing treatment plant and importing water from the West Hills Water Treatment Plant. Uh, this, this is kind of just a, a schematic that I threw in there to show, uh, the light blue stuff would be the existing plant that would still be used. And the dark blue would be the, the new, uh, process facilities. Um, and we won't spend a whole lot of time on this at this point because that'd be a whole other power discussion. Uh, okay, so, um, as it stands right now, uh, recommended improvements would be, obviously, as we talked, low hanging fruit is implemented industrial pre-treatment program, uh, for salinity control. Uh, and, and see what, uh, we can get out of that.
Question marks.
And regarding. So all new, uh, packaged, uh, membrane bio-reactor treatment process. And then, um, so we don't have the situation we had a number of years ago where we accumulated all this sludge in the ponds to go ahead and put mechanical de-watering so that we don't have to just dump our, our, our waste sludge into the ponds and then have to spend, uh, uh, you know, a million dollars to remove that every 10 years. Uh, and then the, uh, with this, uh, as it stands right now, with these recommended improvements, we would, uh, import water from the West Hills Water Treatment Plant. Uh, they get their, that's a surface water. It's a, it's a relatively soft compared to, uh, the hard water we get in from our wells. And, uh, with the, uh, with the West Hills water, um, we should be able to, um, phase out having, uh, individual water softeners in the community. This, this water is good enough quality that you shouldn't be to, uh, uh, have the water softeners in there. So we have some sort of buyback program for that. So, so where it stands right now is, uh, is we've got, we've got to update, up, update some costs on this. We've got to, uh, do some refinements, uh, upon this regarding, uh, uh, input that we get from the city of Hollister, additional input that we get from the San Bernardino Water Agency. Um, and then, um, at some point, uh, submit this report to, um, to USDA. Um, but there's nothing stopping us, um, from dealing with the, uh, industrial pre-treatment program right away. That's not a, a huge cost with the city to implement this program. And, uh, whatever pre-treatment, uh, is required, uh, would be up to the industrial user on that. So, so certainly, uh, that is, uh, without a doubt, the first thing we want to do on this. At some point, if we believe that, that doesn't quite get us into, into compliance with our treatment plant, we, uh, we need to, uh, submit something to USDA to secure, uh, funding for this. There is a timeline for that, um, or, or, you know, it's, uh, we've got our application in. And we believe that, uh, at some point, we've got to, uh, we've got to get them, uh, this plumerie interim report with, uh, uh, with our recommended project and estimated cost and have them go through and, uh, uh, continue the process. So, uh, some big decisions for the city council, I, I understand that. Um, we do run the risk if, if the only thing you do right now is industrial pre-treatment and you, uh, shovel the rest of this, uh, that, that program with USDA, uh, uh, might not be available in the future only because, um, we're kind of grandfathered in on our, um, we're still considered a disadvantaged community with, uh, with the numbers they're using for our, our medium income. Uh, the community has become much more affluent, uh, since, uh, since then. And, uh, if we were to apply for this application, um, in the future with the new numbers, the new income numbers, uh, we would probably not be eligible for the grant money. So it's something to, to, uh, consider at this point that you decide, no, we're not going to go ahead with this. At this point, uh, the grant money, uh, at least to USDA may not be available. The other, the other, uh, potential option, which is a little bit of a stretch, but I'll mention it. Um, we have researched a little bit, uh, the, uh, EDA has a program where they, uh, provide grant money for communities where, uh, because of, uh, uh, because of treatment, industrial pre-treatment or things that the city has to do causes a hardship for, uh, particular industry. Let's say that, uh, that, uh, you jack up the rates on your industrial users to pay for the cost of this. Industrial users say, we can't afford it, uh, we're going to have to lay off people, we're going to have to leave town, whatever it is. Uh, they have a program to try to, uh, to try to save these industries from having to leave or, uh, to lay off, uh, employees. Uh, that program has a, a maximum grant amount of $3 million. It's a little bit of a stretch under these circumstances, um, with, with this particular industry. Um, you know, um, uh, as, as, as I think Dan mentioned, uh, you know, maybe those folks are, 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 uh, uh, dying in town, but maybe a lot of them don't actually live in the, in the community. Um, and, you know, what is the consequence of, uh, not accepting, uh, this wastewater from the city? Not sure I know the answer to that question, but, uh, I thought I'd throw that out. With that, uh, uh, we do have a kind of a plumerie project schedule on this. Um, something that's required in the plumerie report to give them, uh, our best guess of what, uh, 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 what our schedule is to, to implement this project. So this is, uh, what we go into the, uh, plumerie report at this point. And with that, I'll, I'll open it to questions.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Vice Mayor Jordan, would you like to have, uh, comments, questions?
I do have some comments and questions, thank you very much. Thank you, Steve, that was a wonderful, um, presentation. Um, if I could get a copy of it, um, I, I have most of this earmarked on my, um, what is this, a 127-page document-ish? Um, when is, when is this report due to the USDA? When do we have to have it finalized to them?
I would say, uh, uh, Don, do you want me to answer that?
Sure, I mean, you just showed the schedule, the goal was the end of July. But, and I asked the USDA if they had a, if they had a schedule we had to meet, I didn't get an answer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It wasn't.
Yeah, I think there'd be concern if we, if we, uh, pushed it up too much beyond, um, beyond this. You know, I don't, July is, is, it's probably, that's not a hard number on this. Uh, but certainly, we do need to get this wrapped up within, uh, within the next month, I would say. That would be.
Yeah.
I'd be very concerned.
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't want to lose out on this money, yeah, absolutely, thank you. Um, so, im- implementing, um, our industrial, implementing a industrial and industrial pre-treatment, uh, uh, ordinance, um, with some teeth is, is definitely needed because we've never had that before. Or if we did, um, we're not following it. Um, so, um, who, Don, who's working on that?
That just came on the radar, um, since John handed me the ordinance and then this issue came to the forefront. Carl's been doing some research for us. So, um, this, the water board two weeks ago asked for a copy of our policies.
Uh huh.
So we're going to work with them to get a recommendation, to get a policy together.
Okay.
For the council's consideration.
Okay. Um, and then, um, Steve, I'm not sure this is to you, this is probably to Don as well, getting an ordinance in place banning the installation of new self-regenerating, uh, softeners. Um, it's my understanding that at least one of our new developments installed them in all the new houses.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's a, a, another contributor that we don't need. Um, so getting a, uh, uh, putting an ordinance together with a ban on new ones. And we can go to, um, either, uh, a cartridge softener or some other unit. And San Bernardino County, uh, Water District already has a buyback program. And currently with this new fiscal year, they have $48,000 in monies to, to buy these back. Uh, $300 to get rid of your self-regenerating. And if you get a cartridge, it's 250 with a, uh, one-year service contract. Um, and, uh, that money's, those monies are not going away. It's something that they ask for on an annual basis. So, um, that 48,000 will probably could take care of 100 to 150, and that's for the whole entire county. So, um, you know, as we progress through this program, we can get more and more off the books. Steve, the footprint, can you go to that slide that showed the map of our wastewater plant, please? Two more.
The wastewater treatment plant itself?
Yes, please, that one. Um, the footprint on that, uh, do we have room for drying beds? Could we utilize?
We, we, um, we think that if you went with the, uh, uh, expensive option of putting, uh, reverse osmosis, uh, or EDR on there, we would probably have to, our guess right now is we have to purchase about six additional acres of land for the, uh, right, uh, drying beds on this. The, 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 uh, MBR facility itself has a very small footprint, will fit on this plant site, no problem. Uh, but if, uh, if we add on the RO, uh, process, we probably would have to purchase additional land to accommodate that, um, or come up with some other means of rind disposal. Some communities have tried to look into deep well injection of it. No one's been permitted to do that, that I'm aware of in the state. Uh, you know, or hauling it off, which would be very expensive. So the, it appears that the best option there is to, is to go ahead and take that rind waste, rind to solids, to a solid-type substance, and then haul, haul that off. So, uh, we, we think we need some additional land, gave them this footprint, but I'm not sure that I, 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 uh, have all the information on the exact boundary of the treatment plant right now.
Okay, uh, that, that's fine.
How much land do we need?
Six, six acres about.
Okay.
Um, and so what about the sludge that, that we're currently generating and putting back into a, a pond? Can that be used as?
See on this photo right here, uh, you see a couple of arrows that say sludge storage pond two, cell A and B. One of the problematic, uh, problems with this plant is that they, uh, this, uh, um, these, these, uh, storage ponds, there was supposed to be a physical baffle or, 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 or wall that separated the sludge storage from the effluent. They, they take the, uh, the effluent from the SDR process and put it in a polishing pond, you see the cell C. But, uh, there's no, uh, physical separation there now, and so you have co-megaly this, which is problematic.
Wow.
If we put, uh, our project, we will make this, uh, these, uh, sludge storage ponds and convert this to, uh, um, an equalization basin, convert the tarthing to equalization basin, um, and, and do mechanical watering.
All right.
Yeah, with the, with a screw press or something, so you have a mechanical device that takes the sludge, squeezes the water out of it, and then you haul up the solids, so you don't have to keep continuing to pump it into the pond.
Cool, thank you very much.
Yeah, and this, uh, the contract operator has been lobbying for, for quite a while to, uh, uh, to eliminate this and, and, um, and do mechanical watering. So we, we price it out with a screw press, uh, for, for, uh, in, in our cost estimates.
Good to hear, because I had questions. That's good to hear about them.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Um, CSF Lotus, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions or comments anymore?
Yes, um, I, I, I need to, uh, we need, need to take this time to talk to the council. Uh, I highly recommend that we go big. We will be making improvements for the next 50 years. We're not just solving the problem for the state water board, although that's maybe our main goal. We've had a big pattern of issues for the last 20 years that I've lived here. Um, the, the salt issue started in, to my best memory, like in 2004, 2005, which was before earthbound farms started sending their, uh, their water to our plants. That's one of the ways I kind of empirically know that we have issues far above and beyond, uh, bad water for earthbound farms. So, um, one of the first things, I think, I think we always attack the low hanging fruit first. Uh, uh, like I said, I've submitted a set of, spit of pre-treatments that the earthbound farms have to meet before they send their water to us. But we need to, uh, uh, pass those or pass something similar to them. And, and, and that gets us on the way to improving our situation right there. And would cost us very little money, or almost no money. And then the next thing I really want to concentrate here is, uh, the engineers have done a great job, and I really, really, really want to thank them, they've done a massive job. They call it water security. I call it a portfolio diversification. Um, one of the problems with our water system is, particularly our drinking water system, is we have no diversification. All of our wells come from the same offer, and they all suffer from the same problems. High hardness and high nitrates. So, we can drill more holes in the ground, and we can drill more wells and, and put in wells, we can get new water. Some of them might be a little better, particularly in nitrates. But, but we, we, uh, in one well, in the last month, we've seen a rise in nitrate of over 20%. So who knows when that's going to stop? Stop allowing us to use that water. Neither source of water has zero nitrates. And, of course, that water could be Beda Bill or it could be the West Hills Treatment Plant. I would highly recommend the West Hills Treatment Plant because it's treated already, it's done professionally. Downhill from West Hills to us, it's downhill all the way, you don't need equipment. Um, it's looking good quality water, it's pH adjusted, it's chlorinated.
Same place.
Even care of, and. Bring up, and low interest loans. I think, um, even though the, some of the figures are shocking, yes, they are, but I will remind everybody that infrastructure is always very expensive, and we've got to get used to it. One of the problems we've had in past is people have seen the bill and they've gone into shock and. And we ended it where we are now, where the state water board is really, really, really mad at us and fighting us at a very high level. But we can't go into shock, just find the money. And, uh, we've already found 45% of the money, and we, we can get the rest of the money on a low-interest loan at 1.25%. Uh, that, that's awful cheap, that, that's awful cheap, and that's, uh, an investment in the future for our health.
Can you pull it up on screen for me?
I tried.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Councilman Freeman. Uh, Councilman DeVries, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. Councilmember Freeman's comments are well taken by me. And I just want to ask, Steve, Steve, are you still on the line?
Yes.
We have a problem here in San Juan Batista. And correct me at any time in the pronouncement that I'm going to make right now. Our problem is as regards discharge, number one. Number two, our discharge has to do with salinity. Otherwise said as the amount of salt in the water. Number three, we have to look therefore into the reasons why salt is in our water. Number four, there are sources for that salt. They can be coming from our city itself, soft wire conditioners and whatnot. Or it, it can be coming from outside sources. Number six, I thought I heard you correctly when you said that at least 50% of your problem is coming from outside sources. Did I hear you correctly on that, or no?
No, Daddy, um.
No, Daddy, that's what I, what I stayed on here, and I apologize for confusion on that. On an average daily basis, it's, the numbers right now are this, well, it's going, I'll do a percentage is the best way to talk about it. When I said almost fifty percent, that was, one of the things that we, we need to do with this industrial pretreatment program is we, we get this, this wash water.
Steve, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry for being such an anal right now, but just, just tell me, what percentage of the problem is the cities, and what percentage of the problem comes from?
I said twenty-four percent.
Okay, on an average daily basis.
Yes.
Average numbers.
Yes.
Okay, based on the limited sampling data we have for the industry, okay, just based on that for now, that's all I have to talk about, you know, have in my hands to talk about. Okay, groundwater itself, okay, I'm talking in total pounds per day of, of salt, okay? On the, on the groundwater from the wells and stuff, we get thirty-five percent of our salt from the wells. From the homeowners, okay, with their, with the way that their diet, their personal care products, we give fifteen percent of our salt, okay? That's not, you're not going to be able to do anything about that. From the water softeners, from the self-generated water softeners, you get twenty-five percent. From the industry, on an average basis, you get twenty-four percent, and then we have some INI coming in, and that's about one percent. That adds up to a hundred percent of the salt will come in. That's the salt balance right now. Now, what happens, though, is that we have certain periods where the peak months, we have, if you look at the data, if you look at the flow data, we have three years of flow data for the industry, and we have certain weeks where we get, like you mentioned, Dan, we get an excessive amount of wash water from these guys. And, and if, if that wash water that we can get from these guys, it has the same concentration that we see in the one redoubled sample that we have, it's, it's a, it's a huge number. On a peak week, it could be as high as almost fifty percent. Now, I have, I've written down forty-eight percent on that, but, so on a peak week basis, we can get a, a high salt loading from, from the industry, and you made a point early on in the presentation that you suspected they're sending us an excessive amount of wash water, I agree with you on that.
You did, you did agree with me.
I do agree with you on that, and we should have put some limits on that. Their permit, the permit, whatever reason, at this point, allows them to send us a hundred thousand gallons a day of wash water. That's their, that's their limit in, in the permit.
And where are they, where are they on that right now, Steve? Right there. Their permit, their permitted amount of discharge, San Juan Batista says a hundred thousand a day, where are they at now?
Okay, so let's, okay, so here, here's, here's a comparison for you. So we have, our effluent right now averages a hundred eighty thousand.
I have time.
Okay, we're permitted for two hundred seventy thousand gallons a day within a plan, okay? Now, we have seen numbers, peak week numbers, peak week numbers of eighty thousand gallons per day from this one industry. So you take a hundred eighty thousand gallons of water coming in the plant, you've got eighty thousand of it come from the industry, that's a, that's a huge proportion, right? And if it's salty water, it's, it's bad news for us. But if you look at all the numbers, if you look at the averages, on an average daily basis, going back, look at three years of data, flow data we have.
No, Steve, have you?
Yep.
Steve, Steve, sorry to interrupt, but you're being very artful right now, we're diplomatic. How much is earthbound permitted today to discharge to our city, and how much are they over that today?
They're permitted.
Today, January fourteenth, or, sorry, July fourteenth, maybe they were, they were permitted to discharge a certain amount of water to our city. How much did they discharge?
One hundred, one hundred thousand gallons a day.
And how much did it discharge today?
The highest number I've seen is, is eighty thousand gallons a day. So technically, they're not violating of their permit, but we, my personal belief is, given the quality of this water, that, that is far more than, than we should have to take on, and they should be doing some sort of equalization, so they don't send us these things.
That's, that's a, that's a separate question. The question is whether they are above or, or below their discharge amount permitted under last season. And you're saying they're permitted a hundred thousand a day?
And I don't know if they start to see the document, but in the permit itself, it allows them a hundred thousand gallons a day. They're permitted for a hundred thousand gallons a day.
So they're below that?
Are you, are you on the submissal? I think that's in, I think that's actually stated in the, in the actual discharge plan. I'll have to confirm that, or is, yeah, I'll have to confirm where that number is.
Okay. And in terms of how much they're discharging into our city today, how do you know that number?
They, we monitor their flow on that, so we've got, we've got a flow monitoring data on that that goes back about three years, and so we looked at averages, peak numbers, and I've seen, I've seen numbers as high as eighty thousand gallons a day in that data.
Okay, so if they say, if they say, oh, no, it's only eighty thousand gallons a day coming into San Juan, you believe that?
Well, I think, I think the, the flow, the flow monitoring is independent, we, my belief is that we, we monitor the flow at the, I think it's called the coke lift station. And so anyways, I, I have no reason to believe that the, the flow data is, is incorrect. And, but here, here's, here's the issue with it. That's the only thing that they're, that they're required to do, there's no, there's nothing in the, in the ordinance or in the permit that restricts what they send to you, and that's the problem, that's the, that's the problem.
That is the, that is the problem, but that's a problem that we can solve.
Yes.
As the city of San Juan Batista, is what we accept here in the, in the city of San Juan Batista. We're going to take their crappy city water that results in us paying millions and millions of dollars to have to deal with it. But the, the first step is to figure out how much of that water is being sent to us, and if they're above their permit, I think they are, and I don't know about these eighty thousand dollars, sorry, eighty thousand gallons a day, numbers you're giving me, I'll check that out.
Check that out, I think that's a week, on a weekly, a weekly basis, let's see.
So, Dan, Dan?
Yes, yes, Mayor?
We have several people that I think are on the chat, they, I think they wanted to ask some questions, can, can we go to those people? Are you, are you done with?
I think, with all due respect, Madam Mayor, I think this is kind of why we have a city council, is to get to the bottom of things, and I think that, I think the issue right now is that earthbound farm and others, it might be truly, it might be coke, are sending a bunch of super bad water to our city, and it's costing us a lot of money.
I understand.
If you want to focus on how much money it's going to take to resolve that problem, that's fine with me. I, I, as a council member of the city, I'm trying to focus on the source of that problem, and I want to get to the bottom of that, we've got some guy on the phone right now who's willing to talk, so I'd like to talk about that, but if you want to cut me off, that's all right.
No, I'm not wanting to cut you off, I appreciate your input, I just think that we have covered that already, and I think he's gone. So do we have any public comment? I think I saw some people.
Did you have your microphone on?
Huh?
Did you have your microphone?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any public comments?
Yes, Carl wanted to talk, I thought.
Okay, well.
Does anyone want to comment on this?
I thought Carl.
Raise your hand.
So Dan, if you look at the footnotes on this table here, if we look at footnote six.
Well, we lost whoever it was.
Can you see the, can you see this, is it on the screen? Can you see this, this table I have, this sludge balance? Are you guys able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I know it's small, so I'll read this to you. Footnote six, peak sludge concentrations are based on increasing flow rates from Taylor Farms, peak month flow of sixty thousand gallons a day, peak week flow of eighty thousand gallons a day. Now, Dan, that's, that's a, 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 a peak week, the average, there could be, you could be absolutely right about whether we've got peak day flows that are higher than this, but on a peak weekly basis, it's eighty thousand, and if we were to plug that into, the one graph sample we have, which is clearly enough, and calculated the amount of salt produced from eighty thousand gallons a day on a weekly basis, by the concentration, you would see the numbers down there, so you'd see that that is the total of peak week number coming in, that's a significant contribution from the industry, right?
Right.
So we do, so there, there, when we look at this industrial pretreatment program, we've got to look at not only the quality of this wastewater, but suggest we also look at reexamining the amount, so that we don't get these big slugs, we don't get, you know, a, a daily flow that exceeds, you know, a hundred thousand gallons a day. You might be absolutely right on that, on a, but on a, on a, on a week, a peak week basis, it's eighty thousand gallons a day, but that's saying, okay, we, what did that average that week, every day? Does that make sense?
But, but let me just say this to you, Steve, and to the council, that when we start talking about solutions to things, and the cost of those solutions, which are very expensive, forgive me if I'm the only one in the room that says, well, what's the source of the problem? Let's look at the problem. And I think, but for me, being on the city council right now, everyone would be saying like, all right, well, let's just authorize the amount of money to address the solution, but I want to say like, well, what's the problem? And the problem, it seems, we're always going to have, in city, what's, what's the word, soft water users, we're always going to have a certain amount of salinity in the water from, in the city. We're also going to have a certain amount of salt in our wells, but if we're having this influx from outside users coming in, coming in with this high salinity, hundreds of thousands of gallons a day coming into our city, coming into our treatment plant, and having to be treated by us, and then be discharged into our creek, and then we get fined, isn't one of the solutions to look at the people that are giving us, giving us this bad water? Why isn't that an equation? You guys are talking about West Hills Treatment Plants and other water sources and so forth. Here's an idea, what about the people that are giving us this crappy salty water? Can we address that? Can we look at that for a minute? Why is no one talking about that? I am here today to talk about that. I'm here today to go against earthbound farms, and go against truly and coke, and everyone else is giving us that water that is so bad that is sitting us over the edge. And if we do anything, before we embark on some kind of solution program that costs millions of dollars, I want to embark on a, on a problem-based program to talk to these companies.
This is preliminary. It's preliminary, we're not done.
Set standards.
We just started talking to them, we are doing exactly what he's asking.
So, Dan.
I wasn't finished, I'm a city councilman for the city, I want to be able to finish. I think that we should instill standards that have been developed by Councilmember John Freeman to these companies that said, that says something like, we will not accept your water.
We're not there.
We need to get standards. Sir, can you move a little closer?
Dan, I, I appreciate your input, I really do, and, and, you know, this is preliminary, it's all preliminary, so your input has been great, and I don't want you to be, think that I'm being disrespectful, but we, we do need to, we've covered everything, all of your questions, I, I feel that we have, and, and of course, you know, your point of the, the source, we need to find out where the source is, and how much is, is coming in that should not be coming in, so we, we get that, so, you know, I think that.
Ram, go start like this. Not forward.
So anyway, I, I'd like to get on.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, thank you for that, I thank you, thank you for your comments, I appreciate that, but I just think that that is our first stop.
Right.
Fine.
Right, I, I agree with you.
I agree with you.
I totally, totally agree with you, but I think that, you know, we've got Steve here, and I think he's, he's gone over everything that, he's exhausted his information, and the, and the numbers that he's giving us are not quite what we want, but, and they could be higher. So, like I said, this is preliminary, and we'll, we'll, we're going to study this even more.
Yes, I know, I know we will, I know I will, for sure.
Okay, yeah, no, that'll be great, if you can follow up on it, that would be wonderful.
I appreciate that very much, but I just want to say that, in closing, that we need to look at the bad water that is coming in. We have all we can do, we have, our hands are full, our plate is full, to deal with the water that we have here, with soft water conditioners and everything else. What we don't need is bad water coming in.
Right, right, I agree, I totally agree with you.
So, so Dan, we are taking steps in that direction. For the last two weeks, we've been taking samples every fifteen minutes for, for the last fourteen days in a row. We've made contact with the operations director there at Taylor, and he awaits getting this data so he can see what the issue is, so we, we're just, we're very early in the process. So as Steve said, this information came late in the report, and you're right, it, it's something we are focusing on, and it's something we have tailors here to, towards fixing. So we just got to get the data to them, it's hot off the press, it hasn't been assimilated and put on paper yet.
Okay, good.
And the city is working on an industrial pretreatment plan.
So, so Dawn, thank you for that, thank you for that very much, and I look for that information to be assimilated into some final report to us, because I think that's what we need to focus on.
Absolutely. Okay.
I think we're all on the same page.
Yes, we are. Thank, okay.
Yes, we are, and you know, you're on the same page, is that we want what's best for the city of San Juan Batista, right?
Absolutely.
Right.
Right.
Okay, okay, so Steve, are you still there?
Yeah, he's still there.
Yes, yes.
In closing, are, is there anything you want to leave us with, Steve, or Tony, or Carl?
This is Tony, I think Steve presented this effort very well, and I thank the council and mayor for listening to us at this preliminary juncture. We're giving you an update, we'll come back again later with, with, with updated information as you continue with the presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, Tony, and Steve Becker, you did a great job, and Carl, thank you, thank you all for your hard work, and we'll go on now. We're going to go on to item four B, is it four B? Yes, the monthly financial statements.
Thank you, Mayor. The monthly financial statements, these are the first of the fiscal year out to you, they're very, I don't want to use the word preliminary, but they're, they're just scratching the surface of the fiscal year, and I don't have any special comments or things to bring to your attention at this. And um I don't have any special comments or things to bring to your attention at this time.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any questions or comments on the financial statements? All right. Councilman Flotis, do you have any comments or questions for uh the city manager?
No comments or questions.
Thank you. Councilman Freeman.
No, I don't have any uh pertinent comments. I I just kind of dread the third quarter uh report for sales taxes that we'll get eventually. And I I just kind of fear for our city's financial health at that point.
All right, thank you. Councilman De Vries, do you have any comments or questions for city manager? Oh, he's muted. You're muted. You need to unmute yourself.
There's a problem here.
Okay, there you go. All right, any comments or questions?
Nah, there we go. I'm I'm muted. I have a voice. I just wanted to check in on a couple of things. Um Don, are you still there?
Yes.
So how are we doing on the super seventy-five hundred dollar speed bumps? Number one, number two, angle parking? Number three, I think we are going to need some additional stop signs. Maybe in the middle of the road in the in the five gallon bucket or something like that because in the middle of the lane, my wife and I were sitting out there on Sunday riding the Donas with Nasa's Weta and Danny Avila. And people just drove right through. They were just driving right through.
Oh, wow.
No, and so I think we might not talk about this now. Stop sign signage. I just wanted to check in on the signage and speed bump issued with you and angle parking.
Okay, all right. We're we're, it's it's not on the agenda.
We're talking about the financial report?
We're talking about the financial report right now.
Oh, I thought this was at the very end.
No.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
The law has got over the end.
Okay, I'm sorry. My my bad.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you anyway. So um.
But you haven't you haven't previewed for what what I'll ask at the end.
Okay.
Okay.
It gives me time to get ready.
All right, good.
Okay.
So now we go on to item four C, city city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um as we've been meeting almost every week, it's a brief report. Um I did summarize some of the grant opportunities that are coming our way. Uh six hundred and forty thousand dollars of grants that we're receiving from the state, um plus fifty thousand dollars from the CARES Act. So uh we're gonna be busy with some special programs launching pretty soon, including a specific plan of the Alameda, uh zoning code amendments related to the work we did on the housing element. We're gonna be launching an active transportation plan. And then uh the Prop sixty-eight parks money, uh we're gonna be attending a webinar next week, learning how to access that hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to help with the Veruti Park Restrooms, the Luck Park Master Plan that's that's launching soon, and Franklin Park. So I just wanted to summarize that we're making progress there. We have the urban growth boundary later on our agenda today. Um just wanted to thank our Public Works crew and and Liz Turner for all the work that they've been doing trying to get our our barrels filled with succulents. Um with uh we've talked a lot about water tonight and we have COVID nineteen later in the agenda as well. So I'll just wait until those matters come forward and we can talk in more detail.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay, so um Councilman Flotis, do you have any questions, comments?
No questions, no comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any comments or questions?
I can't wait for the Veruti Park to be done.
I know. We're working on it.
Seven years.
We are, we are upgrading the restrooms to cinder blocks so that they last a little while.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
Okay, Councilman De Vries.
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Freeman.
Nothing right now.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the the public? Public comment? Okay, does it look, okay. All right. Okay, thank you, everybody. So now we go on to uh reports from city council appointees to regional organizations and committees. Uh Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have anything to report?
Uh just the buyback program from the San Juanito County Water District. Uh we meet for the first time since COVID started next month.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
So you guys haven't been meeting?
Nope, not once.
Wow. Okay, all right. Councilman De Vries, do you have anything to report?
No, I have nothing to report, but I have a question to ask. So uh it has come to my attention through business merchants that a um group or I don't know if it's a group, but a uh a city council consortium has been formed to meet with the business merchants. And if that's true, I'd like to know how that happened and what the rules are. I think it consists of Mary Edge and Leslie Jordan that are meeting with the business people. And I don't know anything about that. I don't know if it was sanctioned by the city or this council, but I would just like to understand more about that.
That is true. We have been meeting. And um we, that started after the COVID, and I thought all of you were aware.
That was back in April. They've been meeting almost weekly, every Wednesday morning at nine.
Every mo- uh morning, uh Wednesday morning at night. So.
But how was that, how was, how was that formed? Was that an official action by the city council of the city of San Juan Batista?
It absolutely was.
I don't remember voting on it. I don't remember voting on it.
I don't remember voting on that either. I don't remember that being something that was.
Well, I can go back into my notes from April and and find out and get back to you. I'm not ready to report on it now. We've been doing it for three months. Um and I've been.
But that's a different.
Don, Don, just because you've been doing it for so long doesn't make it right. We're just, John, I mean, John and I and others in the community are trying to understand how Mary and Leslie became appointed by the city of San Juan Batista to interact with our business.
I don't think they were appointed.
They weren't appointed. It was.
You know, I don't think, Dan, I don't think we were appointed, but um we were asked, or I was asked to attend.
It was an ad hoc.
I can't remember. It's been so long.
That was, it was an ad hoc group that was formed uh at least back in April. And it was to keep all of our business owners, our merchants, and hospitality. Uh that's when Liz was hired on as our liaison to uh keep the community informed with grants and how we as a community are moving forward through COVID nineteen, keeping our businesses.
No, I, no, Leslie, I think, I think the cause is indisputable. I think the cause is absolutely something that should have been pursued. I think the right way to do it, I don't think you guys did it the right way, but the right way to do it should have been for you to say, hey, the city of San Juan Batista and the merchants are in need of some contact with the city of San Juan Batista through its city council. Should we form an ad hoc committee to interact with them? Yes or no? If the answer was yes, okay, then the second question should have been, all right, well, who's the, who are the best people to serve on this committee? But you guys just did that all on your own. And that's not right. That's not at all keeping with democratic principles.
Okay. Uh Rochelle has her hand raised, uh raised. Rochelle? Go ahead, Rochelle.
Um, yes, it was, I believe it was spoken at one of the meetings.
I agree.
Dan and John have attended those meetings in the past, so they are fully aware of it.
Yeah, I thought we voted.
Okay.
We did. And we'll have to go back. Thank you, Liz and Rochelle. We'll go back in our notes and the meeting minutes. Sorry, Mayor.
Let me respond to the speaker. The speaker was Rochelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Rochelle, are you still on?
Yes, she is. She's just muted.
Can we un?
Okay.
Can we unmute?
It's not even a mute thing at this meeting.
I'm unmuted.
Okay, so Rochelle, are you saying that there was a motion made to create a city council ad hoc committee to deal with the business committee? And that Mary Edge and Leslie Jordan were appointed to that committee? Is that what you're saying?
That part I don't remember, but I do know that John and you both attended and John had to sit silently and listen because there were already two council members present.
I'm not, I'm not at all sure what all that means. What I, what I am sure of is that there wasn't a meeting whereby we said the city should have an ad hoc committee insisting of uh Mary Edge and Leslie Jordan to interact with our business community on behalf of the city. I don't, I don't remember that. I don't remember that at all, at all. I don't, I don't remember that even a little bit.
I'd really like you to look back into the meeting minutes because I believe there was, it was something that was um done a long time ago.
Uh Dan?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Liz. Thank you, Liz. And if you can show me those minutes, I'll buy you lunch and have your, anywhere you please. That, those minutes don't exist. There was never a time when this city council said to me, "Try my."
Okay, um Dan, we will look into it. We will get back to you on that. Uh right now, we're on uh, we're reporting on uh regional organizations. So um does anybody else have a uh report? Um Councilman Flotis, do you have a report on your meetings?
The only report I have is I attended a LAFCO meeting with the.
Okay, thank you. So um Councilman Freeman, do you have uh a report?
Yes, I do. Um yesterday, we had a governance meeting of Monterey Bay Community Power. Uh consisted of Chairman Bruce McPherson, Steve McShane, myself, the CEO of the County of Santa Cruz, and uh the district supervisor from the County of Santa Barbara named Ross Williams. So we were discussing um future power programs for Monterey Bay Community Power. And we have decided to uh step away a little bit uh from a complete carbon-free program to uh temporarily uh going to like ninety-ten uh with ninety percent being carbon-free in the last ten, fifteen percent possibly being uh fuel-powered, thermal-powered um electrical sources. Because the only way we can get new, truly renewable resources is if we develop it uh ourselves. The way we develop it is we serve long, we sign long-term contracts with developers who are putting in wind farms, solar farms, over geothermal, other types of renewable resources. We're doing that as quickly as we can. Um however, supply is not quite keeping up with demand right now, so we have to step back a little bit. Uh we are increased, we will fortunately increase our income so we can uh invest in these uh renewable resources a little quicker. We will be, for example, we are investing in large battery storage at uh at Moss Landing um next to the power plant over there. Uh it will be a significant um um battery storage facility uh with enough uh with enough juice to uh power most of the tri-calorie area overnight, uh which will be very good. It'll eliminate some of the problems we got when solar kicks in and then it comes nighttime and solar goes off. Uh so we need the battery back in storage and uh we feel very good about that. So that's, that's the report from Monterey Bay Community Power. It is a community choice. We're making uh power accessible and um inexpensive to our customers. And we're giving you a choice for what you buy. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Um I think I got everybody. Yeah, all right.
Yourself?
Oh, I can't even remember.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, uh just getting back to the, just getting back to my original point. If this city has created a committee to interface with our business community, I think it would be appropriate for that committee, i.e. you and Leslie, to report out at this juncture when we're talking about all the other things that are going on in the community.
Okay, thank you. So I can't remember what we talked about at our last committee meeting. No, it's not a committee meeting. It's a, it's a business, it's not, it's a business meeting.
It's a business forum is what we called it.
Originally, it had been called a town hall meeting, but we changed that. Um we talked about uh last week, no, that wasn't last week.
Yes, it was, it was last, it was last Wednesday.
Okay, we talked about the parklets and uh the the parking spaces uh that are taking, are being taken up by the parklets. And what some of the merchants are wanting to do, hours of operation. Um we talked about uh the possibility of uh level one, uh bringing in more hours uh or having more patrolling hours for the the barrels and the succulents that were de- that were designed so beautifully by uh Liz, our liaison. Um we talked about our, our smoking ordinance. Um and uh we, we were going to have a grant reopening, a grant reopening and ribbon cutting, and we canceled that. And uh.
That was the main focus.
Yeah, the main focus was that we were, we were going to cancel, well, we did, we canceled everything. That's, I don't know if you can add anything to that, Leslie?
The rest of it seems to be with uh that ribbon cutting ceremony.
Yeah.
This was part of our COVID nineteen, so that's why it didn't come out in this setting.
Okay, so that was, that was it. If 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 you don't have anything else to add to it, Leslie. All right. So we'll go.
So Mayor, just so I understand going forward, this item on the agenda is for council members that attend regional and and multi-board type meetings. I wouldn't expect the Urban Growth Boundary Ad hoc Committee to report under this item. I would expect it to have its own attention. And so I would pick this up under the COVID nineteen conversation, which is where we generally talk about it. Uh maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember De Vries, but that's, I think, the appropriate place to talk about uh this business forum.
Okay, all right. Well, that kind of threw me off, so sorry about that. All right, so um do we have any public comment uh at all on any, any of our items?
Okay.
I don't think we do.
So I'm moving.
Okay, so um we'll go on to item five, public hearings. And that, yeah, item A, approved resolution twenty twenty XX, levying the annual special tax for community facilities, district number twenty eighteen dash zero one for fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. Um on October sixteen, twenty eighteen, the city council officially formed the San Juan Batista Community Facilities District, number twenty eighteen dash oh one, in order to levy a special tax assessment fund public services required to maintain certain public improvements. Uh the two uh subject properties are our new developments, Vancha Vista and Copperleaf. Um later in this agenda, we'll be talking about accepting the public facilities at Copperleaf. And there'll be monies in the bank saved up as a result of this program over the last two years to help pay for the continuation of landscape services. So for example, in Copperleaf, uh the eleven thousand eight hundred dollar annual budget uh is. budget, uh, is, is primarily a ninety percent landscape maintenance services. So we'll be picking up those services starting in the next few weeks, assuming that's approved tonight. Uh, the total budget for this program is about, it has a sixteen thousand dollar savings account and the annual levy is four hundred and seventy-two dollars, uh, a year per household. The, uh, the Rancho Vista project is similar in scope, uh, twice as many homes, so obviously that's a twenty-two thousand dollar operations budget with an eighteen thousand dollar landscape maintenance obligation. Uh, we are not, uh, near as close to accepting those public improvements. Of course, they include the roundabout, which I can say is underdesigned and moving forward finally. So, um, uh, the roundabout's completed, we accept all the public improvements in Rancho Vista and then the city will begin to manage, uh, using these funds, the, the, uh, the, the maintenance of, of these public facilities. So this is the annual assessment, it's a small cost of living increase. And with that, Mayor, we can open the public hearing to see if there are any speakers. We did mail out to all of the residents in, in both communities, so, uh, folks are aware that this matter is coming forward. That's not a requirement, but we thought it would be a, a practical, uh, uh, thing to do.
Okay, so do we have any public comment? How do we know if we have public comment? I don't see anything.
All right. Let's see, where are they?
Hello?
Okay.
Oh, good, we have a public comment, yes.
Yes, um, the question is, is this gonna be assessed every year? We're gonna have a, is it the same amount every year? Or we're gonna go through the meeting every year to have the, the special tax?
So this is an annual assessment and if necessary, uh, the, uh, the assessment allows for cost of living increases, uh, to keep up with the cost of the maintenance services. Uh, in our Valley Vista Assessment District, which is quite a bit older, we've been able to keep the costs at bay. And so although we've had the annual hearing, we haven't had to increase the cost. But yes, it is required that we have an annual public hearing to review this program and these fees.
Okay, so we will, we will assess this every year?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay. Yeah, because at this time, um, the Rancho Vista is not completely developed, so there are still some units, underdeveloped.
Right, and so this money is being kept in a savings account, um, until we start spending it on the operations. There are some significant, uh, capital improvements, uh, ten, fifteen years from now, uh, regarding the playgrounds, regarding the storm drain, regarding the streets. So it's good to have a nice savings account as we go into this, in case there is a storm or, or other, or the emergency, we have the funds in the Assessment District to make immediate repairs.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other person that wants to comment?
I don't see any hands up in there.
So do I open it to the council members?
Right, so are you ready to close the public hearing?
Yeah. So we'll close public, uh, hearing and open it to the council. Councilman Freeman, do you have anything to say? Okay, thank you. Councilman DeVries?
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Flotis?
No.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we move on.
Or you need a, uh, two resolutions to adopt.
A motion.
A motion for the resolution, right.
So, um, we need a, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution of the City Council of the City of San Juan Batista levying the annual special tax for the Community Facilities District, Number 2018-01 for fiscal year 2020-21. Resolution 2020-36.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So it's been...
Are we gonna vote on it?
Move, but, oh, yes, roll call vote.
Councilmember Flores?
I'm surrounded.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember DeVries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the maker passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So we have five action items.
So now we have action items. A, request Wi-Fi access for Aroma San Juan Unified School District, um, NTE, one thousand four hundred.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Rochelle, would you like to present this item? Can you hear me or would you like me to summarize it for the council? Either way.
Um, you're welcome to summarize it.
Okay, this is a, a program, um, during eighteen nineteen, uh, we partnered with San Juan Elementary School to provide accelerated reader quizzes for their students in their library. We purchased eight hundred dollars in books. Uh, we saw many students and their parents using the program throughout the summer last year. So we did budget money again this summer, but we're unable to have these, these great programs that Rochelle has worked to develop. So moving forward, the same group is considering installing Wi-Fi access points near each campus that can be made available during normal school hours to guarantee that, that students have access to Wi-Fi that they may not currently have. Um, currently three hundred students are without Wi-Fi at home. Um, considering that libraries are not included in any of the reopening guidelines, they're, they're Level Four, Stage Four, um, it doesn't look like they'll be able to provide summer programming again, again this year. So, uh, in partnership with the San Juan Batista Rotary, uh, looking at units, it costs anywhere from seven hundred and fifty-four dollars to two thousand two hundred and twenty-seven each. They'll need to purchase three units along with the associated hardware. Um, the original summer budget was ten thousand dollars. Uh, the post-COVID summer programming budget is half of that, five thousand, the cost of this program. Uh, we increased that up to fourteen hundred dollars, uh, not to exceed. So we're just asking that the council approve, uh, the reprogramming of some of the summer funding to help with the, the students' access to Wi-Fi.
So do you have any, uh, comments or questions?
Any comments or questions on this one?
The only comment I have is it's a good program and I think we should put it into motion since, uh, the, the school district, uh, has already started on it with the buses that Rotary funded.
Right.
Okay.
It's, it's a great need out there in this community. We need to really do something about, you know, getting, that's why we have problems with this, this program, I mean, this, these meetings, because the internet is not stable.
Okay.
Rochelle?
Thank you.
Rochelle has something.
Rochelle?
Yeah, I was gonna say that I also asked for matching funds from the San Juan Batista Library Auxiliary and I looked into a grant that, uh, Don sent my way about getting Wi-Fi for the entire city. And, um, the map that was given with that grant specifically excluded all city streets and we weren't eligible based on that criteria, so. Um, I have looked at other sources of funding as well.
Okay, thank you Rochelle. Councilman, Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions, comments?
The only comment I have is I, I, I like to congratulate the Rotary Club on doing a really good job of getting, uh, the buses, uh, ready for school and, and the Wi-Fi access for the, for the children who, uh, don't have adequate, um, access at, at their homes. Uh, I think it's a really great thing and I think it's great if we can piggyback on anything we can do to help out. Um, we, we need, uh, our next generation to be, to be well-educated. And I am worried about this, not just for San Juan, but for the entire society missing out of school.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, John. Um, Councilman Freeman?
DeVries?
Oh, sorry. Oh, Lord, Councilman DeVries?
Just a, a follow-up question. Rochelle, what do you mean that grant you applied for excluded city streets?
It's a...
What's it a grant for then?
It, it's a rural, it's a rural USDA grant that I asked Rochelle to look into and it's rural nature. Uh, they had a map to determine eligibility and the map included the rural area around the city, not the city itself.
Yeah.
Thanks Rochelle.
All right.
Yeah, so it wouldn't, uh, I didn't apply for it because we couldn't qualify. It didn't include any of, um, our city areas. Specifically excluded us.
Yeah, I maybe have a connection to that. There's a very specific reason for that. Even think, uh, companies called AT&amp;T and Charter who logged our state legislature specifically exclude San Juan and all other cities. So they're just leaving the areas where they don't go to for these grants.
Right.
All right, thank you.
I could have gotten free Wi-Fi for the lettuce, but not for our residents.
Yeah, wrong head.
Thank you Rochelle. Vice Mayor Jordan?
I'm not, Madam Mayor, I'm not, no, I just think that's something, there just be not a...
All right, sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
No, I said, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so Rochelle, um, so the grant that you're, we're referring to applies to only city streets within the city limits of San Juan Batista, right? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, it covered a larger area than that, but the area we were looking at, it specifically excluded.
Okay, is there any opportunity to apply for the same grant that might extend past the city limits? Because we have a lot of folks that live beyond city limits in the canyon and San Juan Valley and elsewhere. I'd say a whole bunch of people identify. The people that live in Rancho Slarios, for example, have a San Juan Batista address, just so everyone knows. They, they say they live in San Juan Batista Rancho Slarios, so the city limits isn't necessarily a boundary, um, in a lot of people's minds. I'm just wondering why an application process would be so limiting. Can you help me with that?
Uh, I was looking specifically at helping the students that, uh, I was aware of and none of them lived within the areas that grants serviced.
Okay, so the...
The town as a whole, so.
Okay, so the, the students that you were focusing on are only served by the school system that is on a city street in the, in the city of San Juan Batista as defined?
In the Aroma San Juan Unified School District. Uh, myself, the San Bernardino County Free Library, the San, uh, San Bernardino Rotary, uh, they all participated in, uh, the school district and we determined it wasn't, uh, useful or viable.
Okay, well, well, two, two things. First Rochelle, thank you for all your hard work on that. It's really, secondly, I think that's wrong because anyone on this council knows that we have a lot of folks living outside of compliance of the city, San Juan Batista city limits, people on the canyon, the valley, as I said, Aroma, San Bernardino. There are a lot of people who call San Juan Batista home and don't live within the city limits, so that's too bad. But thank you for trying Rochelle.
Yeah, I agree. I know with the canyon, it was a issue with antennas not being in the right places.
Are you serious right now?
Yes, they, they can't get communication. There's a lot of dead stuff.
So are you, are you telling me that the reason for denial for the San Juan Canyon, even though it's outside the city limits, was because they didn't have their antenna in the wrong, in, in the right places?
I think I'm using the wrong terminology. It's the, uh, companies that don't have the, uh, radio extenders or, uh, cell phone towers and thing that it could utilize. It's been a few weeks since I...
And, and this is probably something that the grantor can answer.
Yeah, let's get back to the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move to the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Wait, wait, what, what was that Caesar?
We're going to, we're, uh...
Let's move the agenda.
It's what on the agenda?
We're moving the agenda, Dan. We're moving the agenda, we're moving on. So...
No, I, I just, oh, wait, hold on a minute. I disagree with that. That was an agenda item. That was to... In what?
No, sir, it's a Wi-Fi access, what we're dealing with, not, you know, grants and all that, it's a whole different topic.
Caesar?
You have a time here, you what? We're gonna resolve it.
Caesar, you're, you are not going to limit my questioning on an agenda item. Let me say that right now. You're not gonna...
I'm not doing that.
On...
I'm not doing that, Dan. I'm not doing that, Dan. I'm saying...
Yeah, you did. You said it was not on the agenda. It is on the agenda, it was an agenda item and I'm questioning and also praising Rochelle for all the hard, great work that she's done and I'm just trying to understand that. And if I don't have this opportunity to understand that, what opportunity do I have? So I'm not gonna have you close me down in my questioning as a city councilman right now. I'm not gonna stand for that.
Okay, go ahead. You got it, go.
No, I'm done.
Okay.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, so, um...
I'd like to make a motion that, um, we, uh, approve the Wi-Fi access for Aroma San Juan Unified School District not to exceed fourteen hundred bucks.
I second it.
So, okay, so now we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember DeVries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, now we go to item B, approved resolution 2020 XX for dedication of open space at Rancho Vista.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the city engineer has, has provided a staff report for the city council. It's rather straightforward. It follows through on a council policy when the final track map for Rancho Vista was modified at the request of the property owners in the Valley Vista subdivision. And I tried to show you a better picture of this map so you could get an idea. This is Third Street across the bottom, um, Third Street coming in, the big tree is here on the corner, Donner Street is over here. So you can see, uh, the Valley Vista, uh, homes are, are right behind and around this fence. And so, uh, this, this, uh, map was changed. There were two parcels to be down here, uh, at the bottom, right next to these homes and they were removed and the map was redone. And then these lots, eighty-one through eighty-five, are the last lots being built in the development. And what this does is it takes the tail end of those lots, these five pieces right here, and dedicates them to the city as open space and, and to further protect the privacy of the homeowners in the Creek Bridge Development, there are being trees planted here, uh, so that the, uh, the homeowner, the new homeowners coming into town don't have, uh, a direct view into the backyards of the Creek Bridge houses. This was all agreed and approved in 2018 when the map was revised and, uh, now we're following through. Uh, by accepting this dedication, uh, it allows, uh, Meritage to, uh, sell these, these final homes, which, uh, are, are getting the roofs finalized now and probably about sixty percent completed. So with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions, Vice Mayor Jordan.
I do not.
Councilman, uh, Flotis, do you have any questions?
No questions, no comments.
Councilman Freeman?
No, I'm just glad to see the open space being, uh, donated to the city.
Yeah, right.
We discussed it quite a bit a couple of years ago.
Thank you. Councilman DeVries?
Uh, yes, uh, I'm glad to see the, as Councilman Freeman stated, I'm glad to see the open space dedicated. But my question is just to the city manager, uh, in the city manager's opinion, has the Rancho Vista subdivision complied with the affordable housing ordinance?
I spoke with the city attorney about this, um, last week and, and she's more qualified to answer that question than I am. Uh, we reviewed it when we were talking about shutting down contractors and whether or not they met the affordable housing requirement. They're required to pay an in-lug fee. They paid the fee that was on the books at that time. Is it enough to build affordable housing? No. Are they in compliance? Probably. I don't know, Deb, do you want to speak to that? That's not really the nature of this agenda item, but I don't know what...
Just briefly, they had a development agreement, so they locked in their fees with that development agreement, so prior to the development agreement... So prior to the development agreement being signed, would be the time to challenge the amount of the fees. There's nothing we can do about it now.
Okay. All right, thank you. So do we have any public comment?
There's nothing we can do about it now.
Okay. All right, so I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Jordan, did I ask you?
Yes, I have nothing.
All right, all right. So I need a...
I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution 202037 of the city of San Juan Batista accepting the dedications of land from Meritage Homes for open space within the Rancho Vista subdivision.
Do I have a second?
I second, I second it.
Thank you. So roll call vote.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mary Ed?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the maker, passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Now we go on to approved resolution 2020XX accepting subdivision public improvements at Copperleaf.
The Copperleaf development by Eden Bridge is near completion. When I first arrived a year ago, I walked through an inspection of that property to find that the city inspectors had been, had not been present. They pushed, they pushed us to accept their improvements, and we said no. They corrected several, several problems out of that property and have really come around and made some serious improvements now that they know that we're keeping an eye on their work. Having said that, last fall, the city council did agree to accept a majority of these improvements. They have work to do still in the retention basin, and some of the, the new homes that were being built last fall have now been completed. So that work has been done. Our inspector Terry Deview has signed off on the punch list, and the city engineer has brought this forward to you tonight to accept the public improvements. We retain 10% of the estimated cost of the improvements to, for a one-year guarantee and warranty of the work done. So if we lose a tree or if a sidewalk cracks, the city has the funds to go in and make those repairs. The ongoing operations and maintenance of the landscaping will be taken care of by the assessment district just considered in public hearing. So with that, I concur with the city engineer, and we're asking the city council to, to approve the acceptance of, of these public improvements in the Copperleaf development.
One year as of today, or the signage of?
The signage of.
Perfect.
Right. So... Do we have a...
Anybody else?
Motion to approve?
Have a conversation?
No comment?
Sorry.
Right to motion?
So do you want, would you like to make a comment? I'm sorry, I...
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's ordinary that you first accept public comment.
Yes. No, I think first I accept council, comment and, and questions, and then the, the public. So I'll accept your comment and questions first?
Well, I think first you need to public comment. But if public comment is open and therefore closed, and you're going to the council, my comment is this, stay met with Rancho Vista. It's my view that both Rancho Vista and Copperleaf were given a complete repass of affordable housing. And that is no small repass. We're talking tens of millions of dollars that we're giving to them by the prior administration. And that's money I think that we can still, we can... Because they're not done. And Don just mentioned the fact that Copperleaf is about 60% done. And I have been lobbying him and others to try to get back at the table, get them to pay what they needed to pay in the very first instance during the prior administration. And that could, the millions of dollars that they should have paid in the first instance could do wonders to our budget, wonders to our budget. And the fact that no one's listening to me is baffling. I, I can't even understand it. Because if, if any of these developers had done these developments in any other jurisdiction, I can guarantee you they're gonna have to comply with some type of Affordable Housing Ordinance. Here in San Juan, no, don't worry about it. No, you don't have to, you don't have to do anything. You do secondary units. You can do this, you can do that. It's complete nonsense. And it's an opportunity... I, I'm not talking about water under the bridge. I'm talk, I'm looking forward. It's an opportunity for us to make some money on these guys, these developers, Rancho Vista and Copperleaf, to pay what they should have paid, or a fraction thereof that they should have paid in the first instance.
So I was listening to you, and I brought this up with the city attorney, and again, got back to development agreements that were approved two, two years ago. When we looked into this developer's compliance with the affordable housing, we found that they were far more compliant. In fact, nine of these properties have ADUs attached to them, and those ADUs have deed restrictions assigned to them. So it's much more formal than the Rancho Vista project, and it, the development agreement is, is where that, negotiation is where that should have occurred back in 2018.
Thank you.
The council didn't have a development agreement.
So, Don, let me interject right there. Of the two developments, one has a development agreement, one does not, correct? Deb?
That's correct.
And the one that comes to Rancho Vista, right?
Yes.
So what absolves Copperleaf as the other development from the restrictions that were in place when we did our Affordable Housing Ordinance?
So that they have approved affordable housing, the city council at that time approved the secondary units on the property as affordable housing. And, and I don't really have a method to go back and recollect on a project that was already approved...
Stop, stop, stop. You said that... Give, give me the citation to that. I've got my pen and my paper right here. Tell me where in the San Juan Batista municipal code it says that secondary units are available as compliant with the Affordable Housing Ordinance? Tell me, tell me that code section, I wanna write it down.
I, I don't have it in front of me right now. And I know you asked this when this project was approved. You brought up this very issue at the time of approval. When the, you know, it, it, it complied with the Affordable Housing Unit Ordinance at that time.
According to...
Yeah, we could go back and revisit it, but I don't think it's useful to do it right now in the city council.
Wait, Deb, you said it complied. Did it comply, it complied according to who? According to you and Roger at that time?
According to the city council at that time. They approved it as, as given to them in the plans. They approved that Affordable Housing configuration. And I, I just don't think it's useful to do it right now in front of the public. I think if we look at this later, if you see a method, you can go back and change projects that have already been approved, and then recollect additional fees or additional Affordable Housing. I mean, I'd be glad to look at that. I just don't know a vehicle to do that, Dan. So I think, like, let's take this offline and do it tomorrow. Give me the, you know, your thoughts on it, and I can look into if there's a way to go back. But I just don't think there's a way to go back.
Deb, Deb and Don, for you to say that I have not been upon this issue since the very beginning is dis...
Nope.
I did not, I did not say that. I did not say that.
That's not what I said either. I said you asked this question several years ago. And we...
Yes, it's, it's several years ago, and every minute that I've caught, every breath in me, I have to ask, what about Affordable Housing at Rancho Vista and Copperleaf? I've asked that, because I know that it was a gift. It was a huge multimillion dollar gift to the developer. And I'm not gonna deal with that, and I'm not gonna let it go. And it came up a little bit when, as Don mentioned, when there was the whole, you know, can these workers get back to work and so forth? And, and I was glad that it came up. I'm not gonna let this go. And even if I do not run for reelection in November, I guarantee you I'm gonna stay on this. Because it's ridiculous that these two developers were given the free pass that they were given, in my opinion, on Affordable Housing. It was a multimillion dollar gift, multimillion dollar gift. And San Juan Batista deserves better than that. And I'm not gonna let it go.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you for your comments, and I agree with you. So, Sesar, do you have any comments or questions for...
No, no, no.
Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions or comments?
I, I would like to take this time to kind of agree with Dan. I remember I was at that meeting, one of the first meetings that Dan and I had. And the Copperleaf subdivision never passed by the city council. It was approved by Operational Law, something called the MAP Act. So, because the time clock had run out.
That's right.
I personally, the city manager, I had timed it so the time clock ran out, the shot clock ran out. 25 seconds, we got in there, 25 seconds, the shot clock, 24 seconds. So we didn't really have a fair shot. I can stick Rancho Vista, because that was, that was negotiated before this. But Copperleaf, nobody approved Copperleaf. Nobody approved Copperleaf. It was approved by Operational Law.
Okay, all right, thank you. Leslie?
I have no comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right.
I have no comment on what the previous...
Do we have any, uh, public comment? Public comment, do we have any? It doesn't sound like we have any, or it doesn't look. And so nobody's holding their hand up. One more time. Public comment. All right, so then we'll go on, and I need a, we need a motion.
So there's no resolution, but I think that the first three items on your staff report are what the city engineer is asking. And it's supposed to be just mentioned in the vote.
In the vote, which?
The motion to approve these three items in the staff report.
CD and E.
CD and E?
One, two, and three.
Well, I've got it.
Right. Accept the subdivision improvements, authorize the city engineer to sign a notice of completion, and direct the city clerk to file the notice.
So where is that?
So it's these three things.
Oh, okay, all right. Oh, okay, I see.
There you go.
All right, thank you, Dan, Don. Okay, so I need a, a motion for all three of these items. Accept the subdivision public improvements for the Copperleaf development, Tribe 337. And number two is authorize the city engineer to sign a notice of compliance. And number three, direct the city clerk to file the notice of completion with the county board's office.
I make a motion to accept all three recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Uh, second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember De Vries?
No.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mary Ed?
Yes.
Um, all members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the city clerk, passes 4-1 with Councilmember De Vries voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we go on to item D. Review applications and select residents to serve Urban Growth Boundary Subcommittee. I think I was, we have some outgoing applications, and they haven't been submitted. So I think what we're gonna do is we're going to give an extension because we didn't have a deadline. We're gonna have a deadline of July 30th for submissions of these applications.
Not a merit, not a merit?
Yes.
I think you need to state that as a proposed motion.
Okay, sorry.
I don't think you can just put out that. You're not de Blasio or...
Okay. I'm not, okay.
Right.
All right, thank you. So... We're going to, what, how, how...
So, so Madam Mayor, we do have a proposal from Harrison Associates, and, and Councilmember De Vries helped me with that. And so we're waiting a response from them. In the meantime, the Urban Growth Ad hoc Committee could meet and not wait for the end of July to meet. Meet sooner than that, that's fine. We have the Chair of the Planning Commission, Scott Freels, and the Chair of the HRB, Luis Machain, who are anxious to get started, as, as you and Dan are as well. So that would be great. We could get started. We could look at this proposal from Harrison Associates, make sure that it, it covers all the business we need to cover for this Urban Growth Boundary project. And then by the first meeting in August, hopefully we'll have more candidates and, and can make a choice at that time. So I think you're looking for a motion to establish a deadline of July 30th, and then bring this back to the council for approval.
So, yes, that's correct, so...
Can I just add to that, Don?
Sure. Help yourself.
I think Mary called me earlier, and she was thinking that more time was necessary to get more, some more applications and to make sure that we have the best qualified people coming in. And I didn't disagree with that, on the one hand. On the other hand, I thought...
Oh, my gosh. What happened?
I let, I let someone in, he's not muted.
Nice ringtone, David Moll, by the way. But on the other hand, I thought that there had been ample opportunity for notice and availability to, to, to apply for this position if you wanted it. So I told Mary, I said, um... I said, no, Mary, come on, let's just, let's just get this, let's just get this thing going. And then Mary told me, like, no, Dan, I think we should really wait till the end of July. And she convinced me, yeah, I think we should wait till the end of July for applications. But she said, I think that we should have our first meeting with the Ad hoc Committee, with Mary and I, and Scott and Luis, this Monday at 6:00 PM. So we are planning for that. And then we'll have the first meeting just kind of kick off this Monday. And as soon as the ad hoc or public person is appointed, then we'll have them along the lines. And I think that's a great idea. Mary, do you agree with that?
So you know what? I think I should, I was gonna call you after the meeting or tomorrow morning. And we're not going to have the meeting after all. We'll just go ahead and hold off until we have that fifth person. And hopefully we'll get more applications that, of the people that said we're gonna submit them. And if they don't, then, you know, we'll go with what we have, okay? So yes, I was gonna call you tomorrow morning and let you know that we're not having the meeting after all.
Because why?
Well, I just, I, I would rather have everybody present.
But we have two people from the council and two people from the planning commission, so...
Yeah, and, but you know what? Let's just go ahead, and let's talk about it tomorrow morning, okay? Is that all right with you?
It's okay with me, but I just don't want to see this thing pushed off. And I, for sure, don't want to see this super critical issue about urban growth boundary that prevents San Juan Batista from sprawling out.
Understand, I, I feel the same way you do.
Okay, so, so now, so now we're not gonna have a meeting until when? August?
We prob... We probably will know...
Twenty-seven. It could be twenty-seven.
What is that?
But Mary, you asked me if it could be instead of four o'clock, six o'clock?
Yeah.
On Monday.
Right.
Saying, "Let's have one in August." Do I have that right?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Though earlier today, you asked me, "Instead of four o'clock on Monday, can we have it at six o'clock on Monday?" Because Luis Machain cannot make it at four. Can we have it at six? To which I said, "Yeah, that sounds great." And Scott Freels said the same thing. And I said, "Yeah, great. Let's do it six o'clock on Monday."
That's great. Yes.
Are you canceling the six o'clock on Monday meeting?
I am canceling it for, for two reasons. I'm canceling it because I, I would like for Don to be there. I would like for him to be present, and he's going to be on vacation. And I didn't find out until, I forgot about that. I knew, but I forgot about him being gone. So, I just, I, without, without laboring this any longer, and I will call you tomorrow morning, okay?
Well, we have to do the public's business in open, and this is the public's business. So you're saying that Don Reynolds needs to be present at each one of our meetings?
I'm not.
I can tell you that, I can tell you that we, we got through all of the cannabis stuff, all of the cannabis stuff. And the cannabis stuff was sticky wicked. The cannabis stuff was hard, but we got through all of that without the city manager, without Ed Tweed, at all.
Okay, all right. Can I have a point of order? We're, we're actually discussing, and, and my apologies, Dan, but we're talking about reviewing the application and selecting a resident to serve on the Urban Growth Boundary and having an extension to that being submitted by July 30th, not whether or not you guys are going to meet or not. So.
Thank you, Leslie. What we're talking about, actually, is establishing a subcommittee from the city council and the, and the planning commission to begin discussions about an urban growth boundary. The question is whether we have to have that Ad hoc ex officio public member a part of our committee when we have our first meeting. And what I understood from Mary earlier today is that, "No, we don't." And now all of a sudden she's saying like, "Yes, we do." Forgive me, but that's not the message that I received earlier today.
Right. And I explained to you why I'm changing it. So, let's go on. Do I need a, a motion to, to wait until the 30th for more applications, or, or what?
Yeah, it sounded like Councilmember expected a motion.
Okay, so.
I, I make a motion to review applications and select a resident to serve on the Urban Growth Boundary Subcommittee. And the extension go through?
July 30th.
July 30th. Thank you.
But wait, wait a minute. Point of order, point of order.
Hard order.
Point of order under Robert's rules.
Okay.
I'm a sitting, I am, I am a sitting city council member.
I agree.
And you, you can't just leave a discussion by saying like, "Okay, let's move on." I think we need to move on with some clarity from the thing that we just left.
I, okay, do, okay, so are you, is it, is it you that is not clear? I, is, I don't understand that what you are not clear about, Dan.
I'm not clear about whether we should have a meeting prior to August or not.
And I said, "We will not have a meeting prior to August."
And you're saying that by what authority, Mary? You're, you are one.
I.
You're acting like de Blasio.
And, and that's.
You're not the mayor of San Juan Batista. You're just the chairman of a committee. You're, don't, don't start acting like you're the person that makes the rules in this town. You're not.
I'm not, Dan.
So, Madam Mayor, you're the parliamentarian here, and I believe that you can move this item forward.
Okay.
Of course you can take.
The item is not on the agenda when the meeting is going to be. The item is on the agenda to select a resident. And you have discussed that, and you decided on a path of action. And I believe as a parliamentarian that you can move this forward, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so then now we have a vote.
We have a motion.
I mean, a motion by Vice Mayor Jordan. Do I have, do we have a second?
No, I have, I have.
Is there a second?
Point of order, point of order.
No.
I have a question for the city attorney.
So.
Deb, are you, are you saying that?
Cesar is, is muted.
Yes, I second it.
Oh, there he is.
Cesar's seconded him.
You seconded him? Okay.
Point of order.
Okay, we are at point of order. So.
Point of order.
So we have a, a motion by Vice Mayor Jordan and a second by Councilman Flores.
Councilmember Flores?
I'm trying to inject myself. I'm, I'm being denied of my parliamentary ability to speak right now.
Deborah, Deborah Moll, are we, are we in violation with Mr. De Vries?
No, Madam Mayor. You're discussing the item is not on the agenda.
Okay, so then let's.
You're not required to hear peripheral comments.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to do the, the roll, call for the vote.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
No.
Councilmember De Vries?
No.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mary Ed?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the mayor passes three-two. The councilmembers Freeman and De Vries voting against.
Okay, thank you. So now we go to item E, five E, designate voting delegate and alternate for League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo October 7th through the 9th, 2020.
So, did you want to present this one, Trish? I mean, basically, it's something we do annually. The conference is coming up in October. As members, we pay substantial dues. The League does a lot for the city. The League has helped us already receive our, our CARES Act money through the state by lobbying the governor. That's just a, a quick example of all the work the League does for us. So when they develop a legislative agenda, we have the right to, to weigh in on that and say we want to favor one policy over another and, and, and direct the League to protect our citizens and help us create policies and funding to implement them. So with that, this report is seeking volunteers from the city council or appointees from the city council to be first, a voting delegate, and then an alternate at the upcoming October conference.
So do we, do we vote on somebody or elect someone?
Yeah, is there anyone interested in being the voting delegate? I don't know who was the voting delegate last year.
I don't know.
Did we appoint someone?
We have not usually attended.
Yeah.
This year, I'm half certain that it'll be Zoom meetings.
Right, it'd be a Zoom meeting. Be easy to tell.
So.
I'd love to do it.
Councilmember Flores is raising his hand.
I volunteer.
Okay, so then.
But if I look at the, if I look, it says that the city council appoints two alternates.
Right.
I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. I'm sorry.
So, Vice Mayor Jordan volunteered and.
I'll go.
Councilman Flores volunteered.
And Freeman.
And so now we have Councilman Freeman who has volunteered. Thank you, all three of you. Okay, so.
All right.
We need to appoint the voting.
So now we have to.
Yeah.
So now we need to vote on this? So.
Well, who, who's the voting and who's the alternate? That's the point. We need that clarification.
Leslie came in first saying that she wanted to, so she can be one of the, the voting delegates. And then an alternate, Cesar came in second. He can be the, the first alternate. And then Freeman came in third saying that he would volunteer, and so he can be the third alternate.
Do you need the council to take action on this?
No. It says, it's attached council resolution, resolution that, designating so, if, yes. They want it in form of resolution. I can put that together for the specifics.
Okay.
And we can give it a number and vote on it tonight.
Yeah, I think there's a required residency.
They give a sample of the time table.
So, how about, how about I wing this one?
Okay.
I make a motion to designate voting delegate and two alternates for League of City, League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo October 7th, 2020. The voting delegate being Vice Mayor Jordan. Delegate alternate being Councilman Flores. And voting delegate alternate number two would be Councilman Freeman.
That's resolution 38.
So, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mary Ed, excuse me.
Uh, yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the mayor passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, now we go on to discussion items. A, 7A, COVID-19 update and enforcement order.
So, there's no report. We have this PowerPoint that I'm happy to distribute to everyone. I was late preparing it this afternoon, but I have it here on the screen for you to see. It's just a review of some of the activities that have happened last Wednesday. The governor made an announcement that affected Friday. The city, the county of San Benito was to fall under this additional scrutiny because it was not meeting the standards of the attestation and the variants that it applied for. So we were added to this list of counties. You see on the second slide here. But this is actually from Monday's presentation. As, as the COVID situation continued to get worse over the weekend, San Benito County issued a press release stating that it was making further restrictions on businesses, that they exceeded the state's 14-day case rate threshold of 100 cases per 100,000, that they were at 107.8. And furthermore, that the positivity of those tests exceeded the, the 8% threshold. And so that's at 8.6%. And so, these additional businesses types were required to close. And they don't, not many of them apply to us. Some of them do, obviously. You've got offices, the non, non-critical sectors, that wasn't defined. You've got personal care services, such as our new barber on, on Third Street, Ben, worship services, and so forth. So, all of a sudden, we were subject to, to more restrictions. And Liz Turner, our community liaison, has been instrumental working with the business owners. We've gone back and forth with the health official. It wasn't clear if malls were closed, if retail was closed. And basically, the opinion we got from the, the county health official today was a standalone shop is fine, but they should be trying to serve at the door. So, for example, when I see Baskin Robbins in Salinas, they're not allowing people into the ice cream store. They're, they're having them select ice cream flavors at the door and handing them there at the door. So, that doesn't work very well for a retail business. But it sounded like with the proper restrictions, it still is not clear. It still is not clear. So, I did want Liz to give us a little breakdown on, on how we're doing with our, with our parklets and our transformation of Third Street. These pictures come to us. Thank you, Councilmember De Vries. These are awesome photos. So I'm happy to share them with everyone tonight. This is, was this Saturday, Dan, or, or, or Saturday or Sunday afternoon? And basically, the, the parklets have been popular and are being well-used. Liz, did you want to speak to where we are? We have some more in process?
Um, yeah, just briefly, I don't want to take any more of the council's time or the public's for that matter. We are really moving forward, and even though we've had a few setbacks with the things that the governor has cited on recently, we've got eight parklets currently up and running. And six of them are coming. So this, this program is definitely working, and luckily just in time because it's going to help some of our businesses continue their business once they've got the situation regarding food and, and the beverage going along with the food. And our retail department, our retail, our retail stores are also taking advantage of the program. So it's very well-received. The majority, I've been out on Third Street quite a bit. I know a lot of you have seen me out there, working on our barrels and, you know, our re, rejuvenating our Third Street. And the majority of the public has been pretty forthcoming and, and accepting our new look. And the ones that, I've had actually some talks with some people that said, "Well, I, I was against it. I'm not sure I like it. I don't like change." But if it's going to help our businesses, I'm for it. So, I'm, I'm really glad that we have been making such good progress on this. And I'm really thankful for our public works department. They've been instrumental in helping me doing all the heavy lifting, really. And, yeah, it's been great. So, I'm glad to see as well our public, you know, our locals taking advantage of, you know, dining outdoors. And it's kind of nice. It's nice seeing all of us out there. It's fun. So, yeah, let's just keep giving them a hand of applause as we walk by because they're going through a lot right now. And anything we can do to support our businesses would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Liz. So we've had some conversations with some business owners about using the side streets as well. And in some cases, that works, and in some cases, it's very hard. So on Franklin Street, it's very hard because the road is narrow at 20 feet wide rather than the normal 25, and making the right-hand turn onto Third is, is different than being on Mariposa or Washington where, where Lola's has expanded onto the street. So on a case-by-case basis, we are looking at the use of side streets if they're requested. We've also been addressing ADA issues where restaurants could serve inside. ADA was not that big of a deal, but now we, Anokas was very creative, put some tables on the sidewalks and accommodated the accessibility in that regard. And De Vries had some questions earlier. I know we talked to our traffic engineer, Keith Higgins, about angle parking in front of the orchard. He explained to me more than once in the past two weeks that, that he could only do that if he moved the center line of the street, which makes it hard to provide equal access to these parklets if you have to adjust the center line to accommodate angle parking. So if Daisy's or, or Unamos wanted to put tables out, they would have less space because you'd be having to move the line over for parking. So, he doesn't recommend that angle parking on the street itself. But moving forward, there are opportunities, perhaps, on some of the side streets, down on the Alameda by JJ's and, and over by Muculimi, Abbey Park, to put in a number of, as many as 19 new parking spots. The city engineer talked about that with me. And we are bringing the striping company back into town for Third Street, and that would be a good opportunity to add angle parking at that time. And Councilmember De Vries, if you had other questions, you started to mention stop signs and other things you wanted us to consider on Third Street. I'm happy to, got my pen out, and I'm ready to take some notes.
Okay. Are you, are you giving the floor?
Well, there's, there's more to talk about on the COVID topic. I have an enforcement item on there, but, but this is focusing on a Third Street transformation. And, and you've obviously got a passion for this, so I'm, I'm interested in hearing what you have to say.
I do. Thank you. Thank you, Don. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So I will address my comments to you and Liz. And they're going to be in a couple different buckets. The first bucket is that it's been my observance that people, when they enter into the lane, don't know that they're entering into a lane. And that stop sign right at JJ's. And that stop sign right at JJ's, they kind of ignore a little bit because they, they're focusing on the barrels a little bit, maybe, you know, looking at, you know, going forward. They just go right through that. So, I'm wondering whether we might have a stop sign in a bucket of sand right there, right when people enter the lane. I think that would be a good idea.
So, so coming from Franklin or coming from, from the Alameda into the?
Yeah, yeah. Coming, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
If you mean it's going west on the Alameda?
West on the Alameda, okay. Thank you.
Right. Right. A, a lot of folks, and the thing that I was, and I, my wife and I hung out there on the, right on the corner of the Donius Parklet for three hours with Madison's and Danny Alhola. And it was, it was a great, great afternoon. We did that on Sunday. Everybody was driving by very slowly. They were waving, and we were waving to them. And we all, we all sat, we were sitting there, who is that? We're like, I have no idea. We had no idea who was waving to us. But everyone that drives through there down the lane is just like, wow, this is cool. And they waved to people that are sitting there. It's, it was a really neat experience. And then, but however, as they're entering into the lane, they don't know they necessarily need to stop. So, query whether we need a stop sign in a bucket of sand or something. Right there at JJ's on the opposite side between JJ's and trees, whatever, whatever it is, Market, right there, right in the middle of the road, stop. Right in the middle of the road. I think that might do well. As far as the speeds on the lane, it seems to me that the speeds are doing really well. I mean, everyone just wants to crawl through there. As, that's been my experience, sitting out there for hours and observing all things. So, I don't know that, I would love to have the speed bumps down, Don, that you and I talked about. Because I think it gives people even more incentive to drive slowly. Is it absolutely necessary? I don't know. Because people are going pretty slowly already, but I'll, I'll leave that to you. At, you know, a hundred bucks a piece or two hundred bucks for two or three of them or three hundred dollars for three of them. Whether that's worth a while, I think, I still think it is worth a while. Angle parking, I still think, regardless of what Keith Higgins says, I still think angle parking is an opportunity that we need to pursue. And Keith may be approaching that from the traditional traffic engineer. And you guys need to understand, I've hired Keith for tons and tons of my projects. I've known Keith for a long time for lots of my projects. Keith always takes a very conservative approach in anything he want to do. And he's always right in his conservative approach office. That's why he's conservative, because he always wants to be right. But in terms of the angled parking, his problem is that people are being backing out of an angled parking space into what he considers to be oncoming traffic. While no one's going that fast anyway, everybody's going to be crawling along anyway along the lane. Whereas the addition, that's on the one hand. Whereas on the other hand, the addition of angled parking to the lane is going to be such a huge benefit to our merchants, our restaurants, everybody. And I think it's something that we need to understand, and I'll move forward on. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Dan. Councilman Flores, do you have anything to say?
No, no comments.
Councilman Freeman?
Um, basically, just to agree with Dan. I, I was down there this afternoon for lunch. And, and the other day, I was in one of the parklets. And I just think it, I think it's working out about as good as it can work out for right now. And, and so, I think it's a good idea. And I'm glad that Liz Turner and Fran and all these people who've worked so hard to get it going, you know, and all the businesses, I'm just glad it's working out.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan?
I love me a good parklet. Wonderful job, everybody.
Yeah.
That, that's, Leslie, we can't hear you. What was that?
All good.
We agreed with you guys. It's great. The parklets are great. They're lovely. They're a lot of fun. And I, I don't, I just don't think that there's any other parklets that are as nice as ours. Good job, everybody.
And, and we have a number of business owners that are, that are watching. I don't know if anyone wants to say anything about the Third Street transformation specifically. I thought, I saw Fran's name and a couple others on there.
Did anybody want to comment?
Sure, I'll say something. This is Fran. I think that it has been just amazing. All the businesses really took this on as a challenge and also as a way to come out of this and be positive and really show their strength and style and professionalism and really highlighting the spirit of San Juan Batista. And I'm excited and really proud to be part of this business community. And they are really the ones that, that brought this vision. And I'm excited about it and appreciate the city allowing us to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Thanks, Fran. And Fran, thank you for all the support that you have with Liz, getting these things going with your, your breweries group.
Yeah.
She was the first one. She was the first one.
Yeah. Well done.
And, and. We're so proud, so proud. Thank you.
And thank you so much for always being right there for everybody else, for Liz and, and all of our merchants. You've been very, very supportive, and we really appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, can I add one thing?
Yes, of course.
Um, I think Charlie Padola is, Chief Padola, are you still online?
He probably fell asleep, Parker.
Yes, I'm here. I'm still there. Chief Padola, are you still online?
I am online. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you, Chief. And Chief, just by historical reference, I want you to know that I've, as a member of San Juan Fire, I fought the Black and Cooper Fire.
That's a tough one.
That was a very tough one. The entire block burned down, as you know. And that was a bad, bad fire. And you, and you had a bad fire a couple days ago.
Okay, so, talk about point of order. Okay.
Yes, and the way, and the way you guys set up your town is perfect. I love it. It's good for us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
Hold on, Chief. I think some other people are talking over us, Chief. Let's let, let's let the other background noise stop for a second. Is there any other news going on right now?
That, this point of order, Dan, that's not what we're talking about right now. And we're keeping everybody up. So, um, let's go on. Or do we, it's, yeah, I think we've heard it.
No, I've, I've, anything else on Third Street?
The, the point of order that the, that the chair of the council is making is that I can't ask the fire chief a question? Is that the point of order that's being made?
We are, we're not, we're not there yet. He's coming on next, and you can ask him all the questions you want.
Well, that's fireworks, yeah. That's not Third Street. Dan's question was about Third Street. That's not.
Okay, sorry. Okay, go ahead, ask the fire chief. But he's not the chief, he's our fire marshal.
The fire chief's on also, he can ask your questions.
Okay, all right. So, let's have him.
Can we put it out there in case there's another business that might want to say something? I was thankful for Brewery Twenty-Five, but were there any other businesses? Eighteenth Barrel or anyone else that might want to say something before we close that section?
We'll say something, and this is Anthony Monica from Eighteenth Barrel. We're really excited on everyone who has put all their energy into making their parklets how they look. And we really encourage everybody that's been coming to San Juan, going there. We can't be thankful and ask for the city to allow this. And I'm just really happy to see everyone's whole different vision on their parklets to make it our own, and that's what really counts. So, thank you, thank you, everyone, for letting this happen.
Oh, thanks, Monica. Yeah, I, I really want to say that a lot of these businesses, and that's why I really want to urge everyone to please go and visit these businesses. They've really put, you know, funds out there that, you know, they haven't been making their, their normal business. So, for them to do this, you know, the, the vision for them to move forward on this, I think, is extraordinary. And I just want to make sure that we, as the city and, and the public of San Juan Batista, that we continue to support our local businesses. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Liz. Is there any other comment from the public, from our merchants? Anybody else?
I would like to continue my.
Okay, go ahead. All right. Okay. Go ahead, Councilman De Vries.
Okay. So, Chief, Chief Padola, so let's talk about the fire that happened in downtown Hollister.
Why?
What?
Why?
I, I, I think, I think what he wants to talk about is how it relates to downtown the way it's set up here.
I see. Okay, I, I couldn't understand it. Okay, go ahead and, and, and let him know what happened in Hollister.
Go ahead, Dan. Now, what I was going to ask Chief is how were you hindered in attacking that fire by the fact that the entire downtown was blocked off?
We, we, we did have to get creative, but I'm going to let Chief Bob Martino Capo comment on that because he's on here right now. I was actually had to get, I had to work and I had to get on the roof with the, the truck companies. And everybody had to work on this one. So, he'll talk about the coverage. I mean, we weren't, we weren't compromised. We have other agencies there, but he could talk more about it. And I'll let, I'll give that to the chief.
Well, well, Chief Padola, I don't need to dissect the management of the downtown fire a couple days ago. What I really need to ask you is that, is our downtown in San Juan Batista more safe because we have a fire lane right down the middle of it? Yes or no?
Yes.
Hey, Council, I, I concur with that statement. It is absolutely accessible. There's, there's no impediment whatsoever.
Screen.
What was that? You dropped off there.
Oh, there's, someone needs to mute.
There's absolute accessibility to anywhere in your downtown area. There's no impediment whatsoever. We would absolutely gain entry to all of the buildings in the downtown area. And thank you for that. Thank you for taking our advice on, on the, on the parklets.
We did, we did take your advice. We take your advice wholeheartedly because we know that if you have a structural fire in the middle of Third Street in San Juan Batista, first of all, it's redwood construction balloon. And it's going to go up like a candle. And otherwise, we know also that you guys are going to need to lay hose and all that stuff. Maybe you can, maybe it might be, it might benefit this council to know what you need to do to attack a structural fire like what happened in Hollister if it happened in the middle of Third Street. How do you tell us what you need to do for that?
Well, accessibility is, is, is paramount in a situation like this. And, and like the council member pointed out, the building material that the downtown constructed of is extremely antiquated and poor foot, very heavy construction, very high fuel load. In order for the extinguishment to be conducted and suppression activities to be a, a virtually closed facility of, of accessibility and, and how your city has set up the downtown allows public safety that affordability.
Charlie, is there anything you want to add to that, Chief?
Yeah, what's important, I mean, it's, it's, it is quick there. We do good there quick, and the chief's absolutely right. The, the thing with these older buildings, they have all these hidden voids and common attics where it's, it's paramount that they get there, we get there right away and start fires suppression activities right away to try to catch it before it hits those void spaces or open, open ceilings and attics. So, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
That was really good input.
Very, very good in, information. Great input. And I'm so glad that you guys are, are all safe and sound. Thank you so much that, for that report. Now, are, now we go on to.
Right, I, I needed to share with the council some thoughts on enforcement. We've talked about this at the last few council meetings. And now it's a condition. So, the county is to receive six point four million dollars in CARES Act funding. But the, the governor was so upset about lack of enforcement and exactly what we experienced with people turning their nose up at the, at the state guidelines and the mask laws, that Deb and I talked about what we could do to create better tools for the city for enforcement. And she pointed to the city of Salinas. And I apologize, I didn't clean the draft letter up very well because it still says city of Salinas at the bottom. But basically, it's an, it's an executive order signed by the city manager on July sixth, enforcing the mask order. It's just the mask order. It's not the ABC laws. It's not, it's not other laws applicable to COVID. It's just wearing the mask. So, it would give the code enforcement officer the authority to write, per section two point seven of our, of our municipal code, to write a first violation of a hundred dollars, five hundred, and then a third violation of up to a thousand dollars and an administrative citation. So, if he saw, if he saw people in an establishment without wearing a mask, then, then he could follow up and, and take that step. So, this is going beyond the educational approach that we've been trying for three months. I think the public has been educated about wearing masks. From what I understand, from listening to business owners, it's, it's kind of like, now that it's a statewide law, the, the mask enforcement isn't near as difficult as it was. People, it's, it's like forgetting to bring your, your, your bags into the grocery store. You just turn around, go back to the car and grab it, and then, and then grab your mask because you forgot it, and then you're welcomed into the store. So, that's been the experience on the street. And, and Deb, I don't know if you want to speak to my draft letter. At two point seven is the right municipal code section to be referencing. If you had any time to review that or think about it, I'd appreciate your input. Deb, are you still with us?
Yes, so, yeah. Yes, I'll, I'll look at it tomorrow and make sure it's the right section.
Okay, okay. Then, then with the council's blessing, I would go forward with an executive order like this and give our code enforcement another tool. And he will be back on the streets this weekend coming up and to try and rotate our shifts so that he's on for the weekend. So, with that, that's all the COVID conversation I have for us.
I just have one comment on, on that. Can we, can we change that third whereas?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So, there's some confusion. When the governor first came out, he tried, he kept making announcements that all bars were closed in every way. And our, our food and beverage industry is on top of the laws and realizing that if you serve a meal, you, the bar can still stay open as long as they're outdoors. So, that's why these parklets are, are a good tool, not just for the restaurants, but for the bars. So, many of them are, are venturing down that path. So, in the draft letter, it said that the bars in general were to be closed, and that's not accurate according to the ABC laws. It allows them to continue to be open if they serve a meal with their beer or food. Beverage.
I want a beer with my beer.
I want, I want a beer right now.
I want to join others who are having cocktails, so.
All right, with that.
Okay.
The moment we've been waiting for.
Yes. So, now we go on to seven D?
Wait a minute. Did, did Councilmember have something to say?
What was that?
City council comments?
Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry.
On COVID-19?
Uh, you.
On the ma, on the enforcement?
On the enforcement? Of the COVID-19? Comments?
Yes, on the prior.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, 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 yes. Go ahead, Councilman DeVries.
Don, break it down for us because the good news is that we're a very small city, Don. And Donius, let's just go through the whole thing.
Sure.
Donius can have outdoor dining and alcohol served with the meal. Rui 25 going south or west from there, I guess. Rui 25 can have alcohol served as long as they have a meal served. How would they figure that out? Daisy's, what's the status of Daisy's, Don?
They're serving, they're serving a meal and they've been making a lot of use out of their back patio. And last I saw, they were slowly moving onto the street.
And they're wearing masks.
And they're wearing masks.
Daisy's might be okay?
As far as, that was my, so every Monday we have, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Daisy's is fine. This is Fran. Daisy's is fine. They're serving a meal. As a matter of fact, they're their only bar that was open this weekend because they are serving meals.
Okay, good. Alright, awesome, awesome. Okay, moving further west, Mission Cafe. Mission Cafe has some tables outside. Is Mission Cafe able to serve breakfast and whatnot outside under the current order?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, great. And then Dante and that big old giant thing that he built, we don't even know what that's going to be about. Moving to the south, Anaka. So, Anaka can have, on the left, can have outdoor dining and alcohol out there, correct?
Yes.
Awesome. And then on the right, Eighteenth Barrel. What's the status of Eighteenth Barrel?
Eighteenth Barrel has a catering truck that they bring in on weekends and I believe that's their source of the meal that they serve with their drinks.
At this time.
At this time.
I'm also working on my own meal as well. I have my section as well.
Thank you Monica.
Good. Thank you. Thank you Monica.
Yes, it is.
Okay Monica, tell us what you have in plan, what you have.
I have an inspection from the House Department to serve my own meal as well. So, in case the catering truck can't come in, I will have that option.
Awesome.
Thank you Monica.
That's great news. And you feel good about that?
Yes, we feel very confident.
Okay. So, if you get that approval from that approval maker, what does that look like? Do you only have food out on the deck or can you have it out on your big ass patio?
I can have it out in my courtyard and my parklet. Food and beverage.
Oh, that's fantastic. So, that's basically like you're going to be open?
No inside. Absolutely no inside.
Yeah, no, for sure. No inside, but besides the inside, you will be open on your patio and on the parklet, right? Oh, that's such great news.
Thirty percent of our customers, for most of us.
I'm so happy to hear that. That's great, great news. Good for you. You and Tony must be really happy that you invested in the parklet, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you Madam Mayor. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you.
That, Hideaway.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I didn't forget Bear's Hideaway. My wife and I gave Lori an umbrella that we were using the other day.
Oh, how sweet of her.
And my only wish is that Lori could build out and do a parklet herself. But I think things are tough for Lori right now. And I think Lori is a member of what we would help our local businesses survive this thing called COVID.
Hey Dan, Lori is going to be building a parklet.
Fantastic. That's great.
Okay.
Yes, and she's also working on having a barbecue vendor. So Lori's going to be great. We all know how to step up and support each other. So, we're good. We're good, Dan. Thank you.
Y'all rock.
And just so you know, I volunteered my tools and my time to help Lori build that parklet.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's very nice of you, Dan.
I think that could be a really special part of Lori's.
Okay, thanks.
I've got a lot of skills and I'm more than willing to help with that.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Any other merchants?
On enforcement orders?
Okay. So, then now that was our enforcement order. Now we go on to item 7B, which is fireworks.
So, we sent out two reports today. One provided by Chief Del Campo and another in reference to the city of Salinas' consideration of fireworks July 21 after their fireworks personal displays in 2015. And I was at that meeting in Salinas in 2015 and the fireworks there were quite out of control. Numerous illegal fireworks, hard to distinguish legal from safe and sane. And the fire chief came forward and the police chief came forward and convinced the city council in Salinas that the fireworks should be banned. So, they considered an ordinance to that effect. In Salinas, as in our county, a number of nonprofits rely on the sale of fireworks as their primary fundraiser. $10,000 to $15,000 a year can be gained selling fireworks in these communities. And so, after the city council in Salinas banned fireworks, the nonprofits got together with the fireworks salespeople and actually got a ballot measure, put on the agenda and put it on the ballot and the community voted fireworks back into being legal. So, that was the process that Salinas followed. But as I see our town as being unique, but having yet a similar problem. I was going to share a video with you. I'm not going to. It's too late in the night. I'm sorry, Rich. But it's, I just want to get through and let Chief Bob tell us about his experience and his recommendation and his staff report. He had a super busy night. We had a debriefing on it with the mayor and then followed up with Level 1 and talked about it with them as well to see what our team thought we should be doing with fireworks in our town. And just to get a report from them tonight following the 4th of July and to see if there's any action, the council would like the city staff to follow up on. Chief Del Campo, are you able to give a summary of your report for us and take that a little deeper?
The manager goes, he's providing for the conversation while Thomas is driving.
He's breaking up a lot.
Post competitive date and not only him, but the other representatives had voiced something about the community death of illegal fireworks in Hollister. What we were experiencing is handling to make our kind of failing.
Wow. So, um.
Six and seven.
Excuse me, Chief. 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 You're breaking up a lot.
Yeah, Chief, it's hard to hear you. It's hard to hear you.
It's really hard. I don't know what you can do, but you're really breaking up.
Okay, thanks. If you guys can go up on mute, it might provide a better audio for me.
Chief, we can't hear you very well.
Oh, thanks, Dan.
How about now? Is it coming through?
Yeah, it's better.
That's a whole lot better.
You can't hear me because I muted.
So, what you ordered, can you try to, so fireworks?
That doesn't work. It's a bad connection.
It was better.
How about now? Does it, does it work?
Yes, yes.
A hundred percent better.
Okay, great. Awesome.
Okay, great. So.
Great. It's not better.
What we've experienced to Hollister is the fact that the illegal fireworks are the complete nuisance. What's happening is over the past year, this year included, is safe fireworks also that cause greater damage because they're dangerous. The community have bought these fireworks. They extinguished them, right? It's not a legal. And they're clear as a moon that causes more damage. So, the nonprofit organization might make $10,000, sometimes $50,000 of damage that had been caused by it was excess of $10,000 in a large area of Hollister. So, what I am proposing to the city of Hollister, and I've done this in the past, is to repeal the organs that deemed the sale of fireworks legal. What that means during the 4th of July and the three years of illegal fireworks will be legal. Now, don't get me wrong, the nonprofit organizations have their value by placing incentives to add that it does to the nonprofit risk. At the risk of property loss, $1,000 of record is a generation significant that we all got to address. So, my recommendation is to repeal it. But to keep heads up on what we're leaving with on an open basis, I'm prepared to park, but in around 20 to 30 calls on a weekend where this weekend, the 4th of July weekend, we ran 57 calls. One of them was a structured fire. Two of them were vegetation fires and seven were miscellaneous fires. Miscellaneous fires consist of garbage cans on fire, dumpsters, vehicles, and unknown cause. I had to have increased the staffing with myself, the fire marshal, Charlie Padola, two fire captains, four fire engineers, and four firefighters for a total of time created of 7 hours to the 30th in that time because I had two additional pieces of equipment outside of our four standard pieces of equipment. Although I had additional staff and additional equipment on the road, we were at status zero four times from 7 o'clock to 12 o'clock. And what status zero means is there was no fire protection, no EMS service that was available because our hands were full chasing fires.
So, Chief, was that all money that was charged to us as the city of San Juan Batista?
No, sir. No, sir. That comes from the general fund budget. And that's something that I request to allocate from the city manager?
It's a good question.
Okay.
That question, no. Appreciate it.
Yes. So, Chief, here's what I have to say for this mayor. Is that, living on Fifth Street across the Third Base, you know where I live, there was illegal stuff going on all over the place, man. As I said on Facebook, I said, man, when the Giants won the pennant, I don't think that it would have been a better fireworks show around here than 4th of July in San Juan Batista. I mean, big stuff, big mortars going up in the air, boom.
Question?
I guess, I don't have, while I don't have a feeling about making of, what are you doing, John?
Oh, come on. Dan, can you let the chief to complete his?
I don't have a feeling about making legal fireworks illegal. What I fear is that if we make everything illegal, it's going to push everything towards illegal.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, that's why nothing can get set off and that's the point. So, when the state deemed our region, San Vito, Monterey County, as a high hazard area, we should have put a stop to the sale of fireworks to begin with. There's no telling, you know, what it could have caused. The main thing is not only the fuel load, but the heavy wind that we have, the velocity of the wind that we have that starts from 2 o'clock is at around 5 o'clock. That's our major concern because the wind is going to push the spread of fires, well known, but it also evaporates the fuel, the fuel load that we have on the ground. So, by me, you know, having the responsibility of being the fire chief of this county, I would try to make every effort to mitigate and lessen the risk of any potential property loss.
No, I understand that, Chief. But do you think that you lessening safe and sane is going to lessen illegal fireworks or promote legal fireworks?
I think.
That's the bottom line question, isn't it?
Yeah. And I do feel it will because as I stated earlier in this dissertation, the two major property losses that we had in the last few years were caused by safe and sane fireworks. So, irregardless of how, I mean, it set in off itself was not the cause of it. It was the disposal of the expended fireworks that caused both fires.
The vegeta-
Unless you guys got any questions.
Yeah, I just want to know where these fires were.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Vice Mayor Jordan has a question for you.
Chief, were these, were any of these fires in San Juan Batista?
No.
You know what? I'm going to ask Chief Padola at this time. I did run up the information and I can't tell you from when fireworks were starting at the middle part of June, but maybe you might be able to answer that.
So, we had numerous fires that were started by illegal fireworks that was, which started a bunch of the grass fires, but none of the fires were here in San Juan Batista on that night.
Thank you.
But San Juan was committed here, but they were working in a emergency call for service here in San Juan at the time. So, that's what kind of made it, it was a lengthy one, but that's what made it status zero for a few, for the four times for the duration of the night.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd like to add something. Just to share here. I started noticing the fireworks on the 2nd of July and they kept on going until midnight. I mean, there's a large boom, bright explosions, multicolored balls. So, on the 4th of July, about 10 o'clock, I said, I'm going to start taking notes. From 10 o'clock to 1:30, 4th of July, there was a total of 61 illegal fireworks going off. And they were right, right next to my house down here. There's a family has two babies and, you know, dogs. You know, it was just ridiculous. And I could see over there where Dan lives, I could see him just glowing up all kinds of major, major fireworks. So, you know, that's ridiculous.
Yeah.
And just for information, we actually started our illegal firework patrol on 25th. So, we did it for nine nights. So, I'd start at 7 at night and I'd go till midnight or 1:00 in the morning. So, we were busy that whole time. And it was a lot of work and we couldn't take the engine companies because they were busy fighting the fires that were starting with them throughout the whole time. So, I mean, it takes toll on us and we couldn't pull the engines off there because people think, well, why don't we get the firefighters? Well, we need someone to do the work. So, we're only limited on the amount of people. But the police went out too, actually on the 4th of July, the last two days, the 3rd and the 4th. And we gave out a total of 32 citations throughout that, $1,000 each. So, people weren't too happy. But, and the reason I didn't go out on the 4th though, because people are not very happy and it's just not safe for us on that night because we do get, and I'm not trying to sound wiffy or dramatic, but we do get threatened and cornered and confronted and there's no way of defending ourselves. So, that night, we just pulled out and we didn't do it on the 4th of July. And that's pretty common.
Drunk people get out of hand.
Really?
Yeah. Okay. So, are there any other comments? Councilman Freeman, did you want to say something?
No, I'm fine. I just thank you for the-
No, I'm fine. I just thank you for, for the fire department doing such a great job.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Uh, thank you, guys. I'm glad you guys were all safe. Okay, so, um.
Kara had some good comments. Uh, Kara Vanck noted that, um, that, that she did see, uh, the sheriff and, and private security, level one, in town cruising. That was great. Um, uh, I don't know if Kara wants, or any members of the public wanna speak on it.
Kara, did you wanna say anything? Any comments from the pu- public?
What, what about council member comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. You already went. You did already. You had your turn.
I have, I have some more based on what Chief Bedola said.
Cool.
Okay.
Am I being lenient?
No, no, go ahead.
God forbid.
Chief, Chief Bedola, are you there? Yes, sir. What do you, what in your estimation could we do better as a city in order to prevent the kinda mayhem that we saw on Fourth of July? In your opinion, I'm just asking you, what, what do to another? What do you think we could do better?
I mean, we could, uh, start some enforcement, but it's kinda hard because we're stuck over there enforcing. I mean, utilizing, and, and we did, the, the chief did talk with, um, Don about some possibilities of enforcement, utilizing, uh, some resources that you guys had there. I mean, having your peoples do some enforcement over there and issuing the admin sites. I mean, SO, everyone was busy that night, so it's kinda hard to get everyone because they're, they're running so many calls throughout the whole county, and, uh, we were, we were stuck in the city. It was way, way, way bad. So, um, yeah, you gotta, go ahead.
So, what I hear you saying is that, um, we're doing everything we can, but every jurisdiction is pretty bad, right, during a, a weekend like Fourth of July, right? And are we doing all we can? And, uh, we have a, a resource that you know, Rich Brown, he's our code enforcement guy, former SO. Are we doing all we can right now as a city to work with SO and to work with our partners to make your, your life better on, on the fire department side?
Oh, oh, I think we're all working together, uh, co- cohesively. I mean, we all work as a team and we all work together on, on see what we can do better. So we're constantly talking with Rich and the city manager and the sheriff's deputy. So we're on the same page when it comes to that with enforcement firms, or fire incidents and non-fire incidents. So absolutely, and we can assist Rich with that also, and we need to blow out with that on, on what he needs to do, but we, he needs support also because we need to make sure it's safe with him. I mean, it would be good if we have, and, and I'm just throwing an example, maybe him going out with security or private patrol to go that, just, it's just a lot better to have two people in there instead of one. Um, it, because people are really, and I did hear, I don't know if you guys heard, I, I did hear, um, the security got threatened from some parties at illegal fireworks because I was on the same channel with PD. So sheriff's deputies did have to respond to San Juan's, to some illegal use because they weren't, they just weren't being nice to security when they're trying to enforce it.
All right. Thank you. Your re- your recommendations for July Fourth, twenty twenty-one? Your recommendations to us would be what?
Well, I, like I said, the chief, what, what his, what the chief proposed was to, um, ban Fourth of July fireworks, and that's up to you guys to do that because the less fireworks we're able to get in and be able to spot exactly where the illegals come from, and we'll be able to just drive the corner and catch them. That's usually what happens. But it's a lot harder when you have all the fireworks going. Um, but if we wanna do enforcement, that's the best way for enforcement. We, we, we get rid of the legal ones, and then it's easier to spot the illegal ones because there's less smoke and less people in the streets doing it, so it's a lot easier to pinpoint. Uh, and, and that's just part of the, the overall plan that, that was presented. So I, I mean, I support the plan that the chief presents, that he's taken to all three different agencies.
What are those three different agencies?
Uh, San Juan Batista, the city Hollister, and San Diego County.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Madam Mayor. That's the end of my question.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, both, uh, Fire Marshal, Fire Marshal Bedola and Chief Bob Di- Delo Campo. Um, thank you so much. Um, and I don't think we have any public comments, so we're just gonna go ahead and go on. Uh, first, uh, to item C seven. Nomination period for city elections runs through August seventh. And that, uh, the city clerk is gonna help us with this.
Okay, so the nomination period opened on Monday, and we have, uh, two seats on the city council um, that are up for reelection or, um, for filling, and, uh, as well the city clerk and the city treasurer. Uh, in light of COVID, uh, the city clerk's office is making it available to, um, go over the paperwork via Zoom, or we will still have in-person, uh, appointments. Um, and these are appointments. You have to call at least twenty-four hours in advance for, um, the city clerk's office to, um, set up an appointment with you. And we will have, uh, one-on-one appointments, go over all the paperwork, and, uh, participants must wear a mask. Um, the, we will sanitize the, uh, all around and, uh, have that all available. Um, so the, the nomination period goes till August seventh, and then will be extended for a few days for, um, non, and, those that are not incumbents. Do I have any que- are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Trish. Okay, so now we go on to.
Well, does it, does anyone have any?
Is there anybody that has any questions? Any questions, comments? Sessad?
No, no comment.
All right. Councilman Freeman?
I promise it's real short. Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, uh, we, we've talked a lot about water, uh, this, this evening, and we need to concentrate on it. It's gonna be the most important decision this council makes in the next, um, next, uh, year or so. And, uh, we need to think big. We need to think about both ends of the system, drinking water and the sewer plant, and we need to think about how we can improve it for the next twenty, fifty years. It's not just a quick fix to make the state happy. We need to up, to improve our infrastructure to make it sustainable.
God bless you. Okay, all right, thank you, John. All right, uh, any comment? Uh, Dan? Um, we're, and we're on number, we're, we are on number seven C. This is nomination period. If you wanna comment on that.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did you hear that? You started commenting on other stuff? Is that why you say that?
No, I just, I, I think, I think Councilman Freeman was thinking that we were on number eight, which is comments. So he had his comment, so it's your turn for your comment.
Yeah, so my, let me take my turn in comment in saying this, that I think that Chief Bedola and his chief were looking for some kind of ban on fireworks in San Juan Batista tonight. Is that right, Chief? And I don't think that we really decided that one way or the other. Um, so maybe that was just a push?
Uh, I, I think the, the fire chief, he did step off, but I think they, they had, he, he's talking with all the different, the C A O, the, the, uh, city manager for the city Hollister and San Juan Batista. So I think they have a plan that they're, they're trying to work out.
Okay, so that was, so it's, in terms of tonight, that wasn't an ask, uh, for us to vote on that?
No, it was not.
It's a discussion item. It's a discussion.
No action on that.
It was, it was, it was a discussion item. If you have your, um, your agenda in front of you, it's under a ju- a discussion item.
I do have my agenda in front of me.
Okay.
So I just was clarifying with Chief Bedola. So thank you, Charlie.
Okay, okay, all right. So now we're going on to item eight, comments. Councilman Freeman had his, uh, comment. Do you have your comments, Dan? Final comment? I guess not. Okay, so, uh, Sessad Flores, do you have a final comment? Oh, he's muted. Donnie's muted. Hold on.
I'm, I'm unmuted now. I just wanna thank, uh, all, all the people involved, all the people there, and all the people here in San Juan that were keeping our little village going, you know, during this crisis.
Okay.
And that's, I'm really glad to see everybody stepping up and lending a hand.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well said.
Okay.
Well said.
Okay, thank you. Um, Vice Mayor Jordan?
No comment.
Okay, and I just wanted to, I, I, uh, will, uh, echo on what, uh, Sessad, uh, Councilman Sessad Flores said. I, everybody has been very inspiring, uh, here, uh, in our small community, our unity, um, and everybody working together. So it, it makes me, uh, feel very, uh, very proud and happy to be a, a part of this community. So do we have any comments from our city manager?
No, um, I'm lucky to take a vacation next week, so good luck to you. Don't kill each other.
Okay, and from our city attorney? Do you have any?
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Deborah. Thank you so much.
Night, Dan.
So we, we're.
I make a motion to adjourn.
And do we have a?
I second it.
All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everybody. Thank you for attending.
Good night.
Good night.